Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the meeting of the Board of Education for the 138th school year for the Long Beach Unified School District. So it's good to be back and to get started again. Mr. Otto, can you leave us in the pledge, please?
I would be happy to. Place your right hand over your heart and begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We welcome those who are here for purposes of addressing the board at the proper time and in the order of their request. If you wish to speak during the meeting, please fill out a form indicating your name and the agenda item to which you wish to speak. You may also request to give testimony on an item not listed for discussion today. However, full discussion on any items not listed on the agenda will have to be delayed until such a time as the item can be publicly posted in advance as a regular agenda item. If you wish to ask questions, please address them to the chair and not to individual members of the board or to the staff. The board has been meeting in closed session regarding matters listed on today's closed session agenda. In closed session today, the board voted to approve a final settlement agreement and general release in an OAH case number 2022-030003, providing consideration, accommodations, and a general release. The vote was four zero, unanimous decision with members Kerr, Craighead, Miller, and Otto participating in the vote. So today's meeting is kicking off another chapter of our board governance work. For the last two years almost, we've been talking about wanting to transition our conversations here to be student outcomes focused so that the public was clear that the work that we are primarily considering and wanting to hear at these meetings and the public to hear is around student outcomes, how our students are doing, what they know. So we've had a series of conversations over the last several months about what that looks like. And one of the things that we knew is that we needed to adjust our agenda to reflect that we wanted to spend more of our time talking about student outcomes. So we've asked as a board Superintendent Baker to really work on with the team what that could look like and adjust our agenda accordingly. So tonight is that first draft of adjustment. So I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Baker just to talk about a little bit of where we've been and the recommendations that she's made and what we'll see in the agenda tonight. Dr. Baker?
Thank you. And while I'm getting us started, I'll ask Mr. Itzen to pull up the student outcome-focused board governance update slides. Thank you for the opportunity. This is some information that I also presented at our board workshop in July, just to name that for the public, but just an opportunity to really reimagine and think about what we want our board meetings to be. Something that has been a powerful statement by our coach from the Council of Great City Schools is that when we change the behavior in the boardroom, what adults spend their time talking about and how they talk about student outcomes, it influences everything that happens in our district. And so this is a moment to be proud as a board of education that while it might be a little bit clunky this evening, as we try out this new agenda format, it is an opportunity to think about our students in very strategic ways and to hear our staff and folks from the field who will join us to talk about their experience and the way that they are supporting students. Just a few slides to remind us of where we've been. So Ms. Kerr, you mentioned two years' worth of work. This work did start a couple of years ago. It started in assessing the work of the board, looking at agenda minutes and time spent and studying our practices. And what that led us into was a process of thinking about how the board meeting could be different in service to students. We tried out different kinds of presentations and ways of looking at data over the last couple of years. And so what you're going to see tonight is an opportunity for us to actualize our learning from the last couple of years in new ways. So that first year was spent really thinking about how to be different. It was also spent onboarding two new board members and Mr. Miller and Mr. Otto using their expertise and also building the effectiveness of the governance team. Last year, we really worked at the practices of student outcome-focused presentation. So you'll remember that oftentimes when we were talking about data, we also had folks from the field or senior staff talking about programs that related to that data and not just the data itself. And we'll continue that practice tonight. It is the time that community visioning happened for the board last year where you were out in the community asking the question about aspirations from the community and what the community wants to see for their students, and that will continue. So tonight, we're kicking off, in this moment, we're kicking off a transition to a different kind of agenda, and I'll tell you a little bit about that in a moment. Also important just to restate that while we've been practicing differently, this is also a really important time in our district. So the next few meetings, we'll be talking about goals, guardrails, the district's goals, and how to look at data that associates with that. That will continue in every meeting. So tonight's a new format, as I said, maybe a little bit clunky, but each meeting will get stronger as we strengthen our practice. But every meeting, we'll have this opportunity to talk about student outcomes. And in a moment, I'll share an image of the calendar that we'll use to actually drive that, those presentations. While that's happening this year, we have important work going on in strategic planning. So community visioning that the board has engaged in will add to the data that is collected in our strategic planning process. And by the end of this year, not only will we have spent a year in a student outcomes-focused meeting structure, we'll also have a strategic plan that takes us into the future. So again, just a quick reminder, what is the purpose of a student-focused agenda? It is to prioritize time to be talking more about students and the progress that they're making, to inquire about things that would be more supportive of the students who are in our schools. And for the board at a policy level and making decisions about budget, really seeing the needs of our students in different ways. What that looks like in practice is a consent-focused agenda that takes regular approvals, resolutions, items that come before you in every meeting, and requires that you study them, get to know them, ask questions about them with all of your materials, so that more time is spent talking about student outcomes and less time is spent in the meeting itself around the business of the district. That is called a consent calendar. And so tonight, members of the public will see you all taking a large batch of items that in the past had been sequenced one by one and voted on as separate items. Now you bring all of your study of that board agenda, you've asked questions of the staff, you've prepared to then take those as a consent calendar and to approve them in what will be observed as a batch of items. I will note, and in a moment, Wayne Stumpfert, our general counsel, will come up and speak to actually that consent calendar, but I'll just say that there's always an opportunity for a board member to engage in further discussion and to take something out of that consent calendar. So tonight, in practice, you're going to see a staff report that focuses on student outcomes, and then you're going to see, tonight actually, you'll see a proposed two consent calendars that will be voted upon by the board. Before I call Mr. Stumpfert, just want to show a couple of tools that will be used. The first tool is the district's student outcome-facing goals. And for those who watch the meeting and want to find this, it's actually on my webpage on the district website and can be, you can go on the webpage, single click, it gets you to these goals that are in fairly final form, but with input from the board. There may be some minor revisions to them, an active document. This is the outcome goals that also will be monitored with the board monitoring calendar. This board monitoring calendar has been laid out specifically with the incoming data that we have. Dr. C. Brown, as we have assessments that are given in the district, his team will be preparing then reports that will come into the boardroom, so ongoing progress as well as summative progress. So tonight, you're going to hear some summaries of last school year in the form of iReady data and our poll survey, which is social, emotional, learning data from our students. And during the year, as the public can also find on that same webpage, can find the monitoring calendar that associates with the goals. And so we will be working hard to stay on this calendar. Each of the meetings will involve staff who are presenting data and also staff who are telling the story of what's actually happening in classrooms and schools, and you'll meet some of them tonight. So a little bit back to process, want to ask Mr. Stumpfert to join at the podium just to go through the process, especially for asking for some grace from the public as we move through our first version of working with the consent calendar and what that means for us. So yes, at your microphone. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, President, board members, superintendent. Just to go through real quickly a little bit of the process for the public and for the board regarding a consent agenda or consent calendar. Consent calendar is for items that are non-controversial and that are straightforward and typically approved by the board. Anything that is possibly sensitive or that a board member doesn't want to have on the consent calendar because they want to discuss it and they're not sure they want to vote for it, they may want to debate the issue, those would not go on the consent calendar. So the consent calendar can be treated as one item, as it is on the agenda, and so you would just simply ask for a motion, a second, and discuss and vote. You can have discussion on consent items if you want to, for instance, give kudos to somebody on a report that's, you know, in the consent agenda, or if you want to at least just make a comment about something, you can do that. There's no problem in doing that. But if you want to debate the item, or if you're not sure you want to vote for it and you want to have that discussion, you should pull the item off the consent calendar and we'll discuss it, we'll put it on the agenda directly after the consent agenda. The other thing I wanted to mention was, we would ask that the board, if you do want to pull something from or change it off of the consent calendar, that you do that when the agenda is approved, so that staff knows, you know, that we're going to pull that item off and they have a chance to prepare and be ready for it. So when you approve the agenda, that would be when you would want to say, you know, we'd like to move an item or two off. Another comment I want to make was, I recommend that we do a roll call vote for the consent agenda. It's not legally required, but I think it's good practice. We do need to know who's voting and how for these items, and there's a number of items anywhere from 10 to 15 to maybe even 20 at some point that might be on these consent agendas. So I think it's good practice. And also, you know, if there is a question of a possibility of recusing yourself or something like that, we have to deal with those issues and pull those items off as we are going to do tonight. So that's the idea behind the consent agenda and the process of going through it.
Great. Thank you very much. So we asked for the public's indulgence as we work through this new system. We're all learners in the room, and hopefully it will get smoother as we go along. So that was just an information item. We don't actually have to vote on that item. But we are now at item 10, which is the call for the agenda items for separate action or adoption of the agenda as posted. Dr. Baker, I believe you had some items to pull.
I do. Thank you. And so, Mr. Stumpfert, stay tuned and let's make sure that I do my items correctly. So I'd like to move item 15.6 and 15.9 to a second consent calendar together as items 15A and 15B. And I'd like to pull item number 17.2 from the agenda.
Any other items to pull? So I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Shall I move?
Second.
Great. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Passes four zero zero. Item 11, recognition and acknowledgements. Tonight, we have the honor of being with one of our great partners tonight, and we're grateful that they're here. The Long Beach Public Library Foundation is represented in the room. I think President Ryan Ballard is here, and I don't know if Executive Director Veronica Garcia de Avalos is with us as well, but welcome.
Thank you so very much. Unfortunately, our executive director and CEO, she's not able to join us this evening. But we certainly sent her our condolences as she's memorializing a very dear friend. But again, my name is Ryan Ballard, and I have the distinct pleasure of serving as the board president of the Long Beach Public Library Foundation. And I count it an absolute privilege to be among you, superintendent, president, members of the board, and all others. I, again, count it a privilege to be here. I'm so excited, and hopefully this evening will serve to solidify a very natural relationship between our public libraries and our public school system. It's been at least a few years since anyone from the foundation has represented and spoken to this esteemed body, and I'm including those who are behind me as well. So I am so very thrilled to be here. Our mission, the Long Beach Public Library Foundation provides support to enhance the Long Beach Public Library and encourages literacy and education for all members of the community. I often simplify that to say, we promote literacy in Long Beach and beyond. We are actually in year one post our silver anniversary. We made it 25 years, and part of my goal for our board, we are talking about what do we do in the next 25 years? I'm going to borrow a statement that I heard some years ago at the grand opening of the Michelle Obama Neighborhood Library in North Long Beach, and that is, "We are not your grandmother's library." I recall the Dewey Decimal System. I learned it in school. Okay, the laughter means that some of you all are familiar with that. We don't use that anymore. You'd be hard-pressed to find any librarian or library representative hush you while in the library. In fact, the library is a very dynamic and robust location. It is one of the only public spaces where you can enter, use the place up, and you're not expected to spend any money. We have 12 public libraries in the city of Long Beach. We have raised, the foundation, just so you know, our goal, we're a fundraising board. That's no secret. We often remind ourselves of that. But we're an all-volunteer board of 26 board members. We do pay for a staff of four outstanding and exceptional individuals. But we raise money to fill in the gaps, quite frankly. You know, money's always an issue. We know that. So the group of individuals just has a love for literacy, and really, we serve as the voice for the voiceless. Libraries, I have yet to meet anyone who has a negative story about a library. In fact, most often, I run into somebody who says, "Yeah, you know, I remember my mom taking me to the library, and, you know, that was the only place where I could, you know, travel." Some years ago, I had the opportunity and the privilege of speaking at length to Mother Doris Topsy Elverton. I asked her, it had nothing to do with libraries, we were just chit-chatting, and I was interviewing her, and I said, "Well, you know, what advice do you have?" And among the things that she shared with me, she said, "Travel if you can, and if you can't, travel by book." No doubt, many of you are familiar with the fact that the Long Beach Public Library Foundation funds Dictionary Days. Every third grader in the city of Long Beach and the Long Beach Unified School District receives a free dictionary and thesaurus, thanks to the Long Beach Public Library Foundation. Many times, we have heard from the parents of these children, "This is the first book that my child has ever received." Dive Into Reading is one of our programs. Dive Into School, we have a summer reading program. One of our biggest recipients of the funds that we raise is the Family Learning Center, and it is just that, it's for the entire family. It's not just for children, but if any of you grew up in a church similar to mine, it said, "This is for folks from zero to 99." Makerspace Studios. If you are a YouTuber, if you are an aspiring musician, if you're interested in learning how to sew, you can find that at the library. I invite you, if you have not, you can personally contact me. I'm not hard to find. We would love to give you a tour of the Billie Jean King Maine Library. Michelle Obama Neighborhood Library houses many of these same things, the 3D printing, et cetera. Did I mention we had a music studio as well in the library? Mobile Studio, Our Career Online High School. I'm going to take liberty and really spend a few moments talking about this. This is a program that we fund for folks who didn't grow up on a flowery bed of ease. These are adults. It's a very, very competitive and challenging program to get into. But for folks who didn't get their high school diplomas at the ripe old age of 17 or 18, like many of us did, they experienced some loss, some challenge, some adversity, but they had the presence of mind to pursue their high school diploma. It was just that important to them. I went to, for the first time, I actually attended the graduation last week. It was held at the Billie Jean King Maine Library. And among the eight or nine graduates who were there, a gentleman said to me, "Yeah, I did it. I had to do it so that my son would know that he had no excuse, because if I can do it, so can he." This is a tear-jerker moment. It is for me. This, for me, is my why. Why we raise money, why we dig in our own pockets, is because the library funds this program. Yes, the local library, and the foundation supports this. My ask, it's a very personal ask, not because it benefits me specifically, is that this group of graduates is able to take advantage of the college promise that Long Beach supports and promotes. Why wouldn't they be able to? Is it because we are rewarding failure? Or is it because we are acknowledging their effort to succeed against the odds? I would submit that I think it's option two. So certainly, I think if a group, and again, I don't think it's a weighty proposition or a financial burden, in fact, I'm going to stick my neck on the line and say if we need to raise a little bit more money so that this group can take advantage of that program, it doesn't mean they all will, but to afford them the opportunity? Anybody's like me, life hasn't always been easy. And so the path to success, I have discovered, is not a straight line but a winding road. And so I am certainly advocating for these folks who have participated in our Career Online High School. The foundation is very responsive. We are trying to be very intentional about everything we do, from representation to responding to the immediate needs of the community. So just a few short years ago, you all may remember a fellow by the name of George Floyd that caused quite a stir. Quite honestly, my question was, what was so unusual about this situation that it drew so much attention? And I think it was because it was probably a perfect storm of events. When's the last time you can recall being in a pandemic and you couldn't drive? But here you have these folks. So we established the Race Equity and Justice Program so that you can fund, so that we can provide books and access to information so that we can deal with some of these, what some might call courageous conversations. Bridging the Digital Divide. We use data provided by the Long Beach Unified School District when we talk about the impact of the pandemic on students and the access to Wi-Fi and the internet and so forth. So we've heard countless stories of folks who needed the library so they could check their internet. One very compelling story was a young lady who said, "Well, when are the libraries going to reopen again because I haven't been able to check my email for six months?" Adaptability. We're very aware of the, those who are differently abled. Investing in our libraries. When you invest in your libraries, you invest in the people in this room, in the people's families who are in this room. I'm not going to go into these numbers of how we, there is quite a divide in how the funding that Long Beach provides to its libraries, but that's partly why the foundation even exists. But I hope that you've heard tonight that the library is here for each of you and should be available to everyone. And so when you think about your public library, remember fondly the Dewey Decimal System, but then think that, wow, but our libraries are meeting the needs. These were essential workers, and they're meeting the needs of the community. So in terms of our outcome tonight, I would just say, hopefully you learned a little something more about your local library and that you will continue to be advocates, because that's all the foundation, that's all we are. We're just some big mouths who love literacy, and we think that is just that important. We think if there is an equalizer to be had, it's the library. You can donate, absolutely. I just want to leave you with this slide that has information. If you had any questions, again, my name is Ryan Ballard. I'm available to you and to you. And where's the camera? To you. I'd love to show you what the library is doing today. So often, we hear, "You know, the library ought to do this," and we have found that our marketing is not the greatest, and so we say, "We do!" So this is my opportunity, hopefully, to market the public library and just know that libraries change lives. And I thank you so very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Ballard. Colleagues, any comments or questions before Mr. Ballard heads on his way? Mr. Miller?
No, I just wanted to thank you for that presentation. I think you brought up a really important piece when it comes to the assets that public libraries bring to communities, as I think that we've often considered libraries as a place that we store books, and it's not. It's a conduit of knowledge, and there's a lot of academic opportunities there with the music programs and with the sewing programs and all the things that you spoke to. So I appreciate you sharing that with everyone here today. Thanks.
Thank you so very much.
Thank you, Mr. Ballard. And I'll just echo Mr. Miller's statements. If we know that libraries are safe spaces and havens for a lot of our kids and families, especially in the after-school hours, I love seeing our Jordan High School kids feel so at home at the Michelle Obama Library and knowing that we looked at the design of that library when we were redesigning the media center at Jordan because we saw the spaces that they were attracted to. So I am personally really grateful for the work that you do. And I know you mentioned it is budget season in the city of Long Beach, and there really is some advocacy work happening around increasing that budget so that the libraries can be open even longer or more days, especially in some neighborhoods that are lacking. So I would encourage anyone who's interested in listening or talking with Mr. Ballard about ways that you can be part of that advocacy as the city contemplates their budget and passes it probably in September. And thank you for being with us tonight and continuing to be a great partner.
Thank you so very much.
Okay. 11.2, Student Staff and School Celebrations. Actually, we have none tonight. So we're going to move on to public testimony on items listed on the agenda. So you have up to three minutes. I will say that we have a couple extra. Would love for you to consider that lots of folks want to speak tonight on items on the agenda. So we'll call you up. I think Mr. Suarez, I couldn't hear him from here, but I think he was giving you instructions at the time, so we look forward to hearing from you. So first up, we have Joan Claire Richter. Welcome.
Thank you. Bring this down a bit. Is that on? Good? Okay, great. Well, greetings, board members. I'm Joan Claire Richter, the Senior Regional Organizer for the Pacific for the Climate Reality Project, which is an environmental advocacy organization founded by former Vice President Al Gore. I thank you for your time today and support for Board Policy 3510.1, focusing on a transition focusing on a transition to renewable energy for the Long Beach Unified School District. And thank you to the Green Schools team, led here in Long Beach by Diana Michelson. I've been on staff at Climate Reality for almost four years now, and I've helped lead our Los Angeles chapter for a year before that. The protection of the planet is important to me because I grew up as an outdoors woman and part of protecting the planet means protecting the people that live on it. I'm a Southern California native myself. I grew up in Sierra Madre, near Pasadena, if you know it. And I started working in public schools in North Pasadena when I was a teenager. My mother started a nonprofit to enrich Pasadena Public School curriculum through the arts. I saw the power then of enriching the public school system with accessible, community-based solutions. Twenty years later, I'm here, yes, twenty years later. I'm here to continue that work in my own field of environmental grassroots organizing and make sure that these students, teachers, faculty, and Long Beach Unified School District employees have a safe, clean workplace to work in and learn in. By supporting this resolution, you are taking steps to protect the health, both physical and mental, of these students in this school district. Children face special risks from air pollution because their lungs are growing and because they are so active and breathe in a great deal of air. Because this is a public school system, I would also add the importance of the accessibility element here. Frontline and fence-line communities which are affected first and worse by the climate crisis make up many of the neighborhoods you are serving. The impacts of this decision span beyond the grounds of all schools in the Long Beach School District and into the health and wealth of all of the families, students, teachers, and associated staff. A just transition to clean energy through accessible and community-based solutions is the key to solving the climate crisis without leaving people behind. So I applaud you and encourage you all to see the value of this policy because it is just the type of work that Mr. Gore encourages and we facilitate and support. Within our over forty thousand volunteer base, this youth-led decision will make a wave and I will do everything in my power to ensure that I support that. Lastly, taking this stance will set a precedent for schools across Los Angeles, California, and the Pacific coasts, as well as the rest of the country, to also transition to clean energy. So thank you for stepping up and thank you for your time today.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Paige Werner.
Hello, I'm Paige Werner. I'm an incoming senior at Poly and I'm going to be the ASB president for the upcoming semester. As well as I'm an intern with the Third District Council person. I'm here to remind you of how important this vote is to the future of all LBD students because as a student, many of us find it difficult to make our voices heard, especially since most of us are not of voting age. You, as our board, are our voices and our representation. We beg you to hear us and to vote to transition away from fossil fuels and please vote for Board Policy 3501.1. Thank you.
Thank you, Paige. Congratulations on being ASB president. Next up, we have Dani Al Hadari.
Hello. Good evening, members of the board and everyone who's here. I'm so grateful to be here with the Long Beach Green Schools Campaign in support of Board Policy 3510.1 on Green Schools Operations, committing the district to transition away from fossil fuels. Uh, my name is Dani Al Hadari. I'm a Long Beach resident. Um, and I work for a climate non-governmental organization called Pacific Environment. Um, we are a global organization working on clean ports issues. Um, and I am so grateful to have worked with Diana Michelson on our campaign to transition ships that enter the port of Long Beach off of fossil fuels. Um, our campaign for zero emission shipping um, has transformed the landscape of the possible when it comes to climate ambitions. The largest international ocean shipping company, or one of the largest international ocean shipping companies in the world, Maersk, um, thanks to the grassroots advocacy that we've done here in Long Beach, accelerated its climate ambitions by a decade. And so that shows that much more can happen. And it's incumbent upon policymakers and decision-makers at every level, from the school board to the local, to the state, to the federal, to be taking steps to mitigate the climate emergency and transition our society off of fossil fuels. Um, if we don't take rapid action to halve global greenhouse gas emissions by 2030 and ultimately eliminate them by 2040, we risk deadly heat waves, power outages, wildfires, hurricanes, storms, the unimaginable. Um, so I really urge you to please play a leadership role here in Long Beach, a frontline climate community, um, in transitioning the school district off of fossil fuels. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Dia Rubio. Welcome.
Hi. So yeah, my name is Dia Rubio and my pronouns are they/them. Um, I'm an incoming sophomore at Long Beach Poly High School and I've been with the Long Beach Poly Green Schools Campaign since eighth grade. So this is a personal story. So earlier this summer, I was traveling in Alaska and I hiked with my family to see a glacier. So at first, my reaction was like, whoa, that is a glacier. It's huge. It's amazing. But then there was kind of the other thought that was in the back of my mind the whole time I was there. And it was, I probably will not be able to show this to my children. So the glacier, it's called Grunkay Glacier. It's retreated over 1.5 miles since 1950. And there's not much left of it. It won't be here much longer. So I grew up right here in Southern California. So throughout my childhood, I've just watched the climate crisis go from bad to worse. I've seen the firefires, the wildfires, they get more and more frequent, and I've seen them set off my asthma. I saw the sun turn red for the first time in fifth grade. I've seen grass get drier and drier. I've watched droughts come more frequently. And then they go and then they come again. So I've grown up, as most of the kids these days have, in this world that's slowly been burning. So at that glacier where it should have been, I was so sad and so afraid. I want to hike with my children to that glacier someday. I want to go to my childhood beaches and look at the ocean when I'm older. I want to run in the rain that is coming more than twice a year. I want to raise kids without feeling guilty that I am bringing them into a dying world. So this policy, Policy 3510.1, I don't know, there's lots of numbers, but it's not going to single-handedly fix the climate crisis, but it's a step in the race. I would know. I'm a runner. And with enough steps, a race is won. So we have to take this step for all of us and for our futures.
Thank you. Next up, we have Katie Allen. Welcome, Katie.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. My name is Katie Allen, a second-generation graduate of Milliken High School. And I'm also a mother of a LBUSD incoming kindergartner. Um, I also serve as the Executive Director of Algalita Marine Research and Education. We're an international nonprofit headquartered right here in Long Beach that specializes in environmental education. I'm here today, like so many others, to encourage you to vote yes on Board Policy 3510.1, to transition Long Beach Unified to 100% clean renewable energy. A yes vote and your commitment to push forth the goals in the document will prove to our students and our community that the decision-makers within our school district are bold and willing to embrace complexities and take up the challenge. This district has already shown its incredible ability to reshape even the most rigid systems. Because of the pandemic, many things have changed forever. But the changes did not happen on their own. This district prioritized change, followed new regulations, revised budgets, and shifted the operations and behaviors of over 67,000 students, their educators, across eighty-five schools within a matter of months. There is no doubt the leaders of LBUSD are capable of systems change. In fact, after everything we've been through, I believe you are masters of it. While the sustainability challenges we face today are very different than what we have faced throughout the pandemic, the opportunity to lead by example is no different. So again, I urge you to vote yes on Policy 3510.1 so we can begin the important work that I know this district and its students have the grit and determination to push forth. Thank you for all of your hard work and for your dedication to our community.
Thank you, Katie. Our next speaker is David Perzinski. Welcome, David.
Thank you. Thank you and good evening. Uh, my name is David Perzinski and I'm the managing member of a local small business, Long Beach Solar. I've worked with clean energy for the last decade around here and I'm in absolute support of this green energy, uh, Green Schools program. So right now, the timing is so important. Yesterday, the federal government just signed into law the Inflation Reduction Act, which includes over 369 billion for climate and energy-related programs. This signals a clear message and offers funding which makes your policy even more feasible. Also yesterday, Long Beach signed their Climate Action and Adaptation Plan, much of what you might already be familiar with as many of their outreach campaigns have included feedback from your schools. So this includes an aspirational goal of reaching net-zero emissions by 2045. Today, what will Long Beach's schools do? So both of these programs really highlight the value of education and job creation. For the local and federal initiatives to pan out, they really are relying on the educational system for collaboration. With each step that you take to get closer to 100% decarbonized, there is a valuable learning opportunity to inspire students and to educate, to get them ready for the 21st century green energy jobs. And as a local business, I can tell you with personal experience that these green energy jobs are real. Uh, are real. Uh, the careers are out there and companies are hiring. Uh, companies like mine are looking for the schools to help encourage the development of our future employees. So there really is no time to wait. Uh, the time is now. I know you guys will make me proud to be living here and I'm excited to have children that can benefit from the decisions that you are making. So thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you, David. Our next speaker is Dave Shukla. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, board members. My name is Dave Shukla. I'm a well, I'm a co-founder and operations director of a climate science nonprofit, the Long Beach Alliance for Clean Energy, uh, here to speak in support of 3510.1. Our nonprofit was founded in late 2017 when lead was found in the drinking water at Cal State Long Beach by the chemistry students of one of our members, Dr. Elaine Bernal. As you know, lead significantly impacts not only children's health, but development and learning outcomes. Carbon pollution isn't as bad. Uh, but some of the associated compounds with a lot of our local sources of pollutants, VOCs, NOx, SOx, a whole list of chemicals, uh, greatly impact learning outcomes and student health. Um, this policy is a great start. Um, I was at city council last night until midnight. It is budget season. Um, I, I'd like to strongly urge you in the formation of the task force to include parents, perhaps from PTA, as well as students, uh, younger students. And most importantly, that you recognize these investments are, at best, assets that can be used in perpetuity. Things that can be maintained, things that can be built upon, and things that once we break from fossil fuels and all the risks and poor health and social outcomes associated, we won't ever have to again. Thank you.
Thank you, Dave. Our next speaker is Stella Ursua. Welcome, Stella.
Thank you. Hello, board members. Thank you for having me. My name's Stella Ursua. I'm a Long Beach resident. And I'm also the Senior Programs and Partnerships Manager for Grid Alternatives for the LA office. Um, as my friend David mentioned, what a week we've had so far. The Inflation Reduction Act, the Climate Action and Adaptation Plan, and I'm hoping that we make it a trifecta tonight with updating the energy policy, uh, energy and sustainability policy for green schools. I am so impressed with this group of students here. Uh, we met with them about a year and a half ago, right, Diana? And they came to us and said, "Hey, we want you to join us. We want you to support us." And we said, "Absolutely. Anything to do with solar and clean energy, we're there," right? But they are so smart. They're brave. They're committed students. Uh, I'm so impressed. This is what we've been waiting for, right? We're waiting for students that are committed to fighting for, uh, fighting climate change, influencing their school board to make the necessary changes to current policies and committing to a very heavy lift of transitioning from fossil fuels to clean energy uh, and to create equitable and healthy schools throughout Long Beach. So your vote tonight, um, I really appreciate what you all started with tonight, the student outcomes focus. I say that if you vote yes, you're demonstrating your commitment to a student outcomes-focused agenda here by voting yes for the Green Schools Operations and Energy and Sustainability Policy. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Stella. Our next speaker is Rudy Cardoso Parazza. Welcome, Rudy.
Thank you. Good evening, board. My name is Rudy Cardoso Parazza and I'm with Long Beach Forward. I'm proud to say Long Beach is my home and Long Beach Unified School District served as its district where I received my education, beginning from preschool at Lincoln Elementary, culminating with high school at Milliken. And I am here tonight to support and applaud the hard work and dedication of these students right behind me to commit LBUSD to clean energy. For the past two years, the Long Beach Green Schools Campaign's commitment alongside other partners have proven to be a great vehicle for local change and sustainable development towards environmental action. These, these youth are already champions of environmental justice when in reality, they should just enjoy being kids. However, you know, the current times are pressing and, you know, they're pretty challenging. And I'm really proud to see, you know, see the youth take action for themselves to ensure that they have a cleaner, healthier, more readable future. Board Policy 3510.1 promises an important, necessary, and ambitious series of changes that will benefit LB students and communities. So I urge, urge you all to please vote yes in support, um, to pass the updated Green Operations Policy. Uh, thanks for listening.
Thank you, Rudy. Our next speaker is Lily Palmer.
Hello, LBUSD board. I'm Lily Palmer, an incoming junior at Milliken High School, and I'm here with the Long Beach Green Schools Campaign. I attended my first board meeting with this campaign almost nine months ago in December of 2021. When I was planning this speech, I was a little shocked by that number. The time has flown by and it honestly doesn't feel like it's been that long. I think the biggest reason these nine months have felt so short is because we've done an incredible amount of work in that relatively short amount of time. At that board meeting in December, we were still campaigning to pass a resolution committing to clean energy by 2040. Today, you're voting on a policy update that we've spent hours drafting, editing, and perfecting. I wanted to say thank you for enabling us to get to this place today. Thank you for being willing to compromise. We're so grateful that instead of hearing, "No, we can't pass this," we were told, "Let's find a way to make this happen. Let's find a way forward." Even at the last meeting in July, I'll be completely honest, we were not expecting the vote to be postponed, but we're so glad that it was because it's led to a document that we're more satisfied with. I've heard people say that compromise is a bad thing because no one ends up happy, but I think in this case, we've been able to work together to create something that we're all very happy with. So thank you for being willing to work with us and I hope that you're happy enough with this policy to vote yes. Thank you.
Thank you, Lily. Our next speaker is Diana Michelson.
Hello, LBUSD Board of Education. Um, two years, six days ago, the campaign was founded. Uh, like Lily said, well, I've been going for about twelve, twelve months now, a little under because we went to the first October one that was in-person for the school board meetings. It's been a long, long journey. Uh, but I think that what I want to actually talk about today, I want to keep it short because we have more important things to do. We have a board policy to pass, if we're being honest. Um, but I want to highlight actually a meeting I had But I want to highlight actually a meeting I had with Dr. Baker. Sorry to put you on the spot. But our first meeting, it was nine months after the campaign was founded. As you can imagine, we were all really nervous in our Zoom room. You couldn't really tell, but you know, we were like jittery behind the cameras because having the support of a superintendent is obviously crucial for something like this. And after the meeting, Dr. Baker, you said, "Thank you so much for working with us, not at us." And those words have stuck with me because, I mean, at the most basic level, as humans, the most basic human phenomenon, phenomenon is we want to feel included. We want to feel belonged and we want to feel heard. And while you have helped provide us, I mean, sorry, while, you know, you were mentioning that you've provided, that we've provided you an opportunity for that, you guys have done that for us. Like I mentioned before, you have quite literally let us put words from our resolution into this board policy. It is so cool and I'm sure that, you know, Ruthie, Emma, Lilly, and Rohan, who've been really working a lot with the document, can agree that seeing our comments that we've put in the draft of like suggestions, having that be put into the document is just amazing. So with that being said, thank you for, thank you for working with us, not the other way around. Thank you today for working with us and hopefully we can continue that because obviously this isn't the end of it. We have a task force. This is an ongoing project. Like Dia said, this is just the beginning of the race. And like Lilly said, like, I'm going to repeat over and over again in the speech, thank you for working with us. And yeah, thank you. Sorry. I'm really excited for today and I really appreciate all of your support. So, thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Diana. And our last speaker on items on the agenda is trustee Sunny Zia from Long Beach City College.
Well, how do I follow that? What an inspiring crowd you have tonight.
We've learned around here, you never want to follow the kids, so I'm sorry.
I know. It's so amazing. So, good evening, members of the board. President Kerr, Vice President Diana Craighead, thank you so much for leading the resolution on the agenda tonight, item 15.16. I'm here in my capacity as the president, co-president of American Association of University Women, AAUW, to speak to you. As President Kerr mentioned, I am also a trustee on the Long Beach Community College District Board of Trustees for nearly eight and a half years now, serving my second term, going for the third term. And I want to talk to you a little bit about the importance of what you're going to do tonight and hopefully will pass. I really appreciate the agendizing of the 50th anniversary of Title IX. Our branch has been in existence over 122 years and it's been, the mission has been to advocate for gender equity and women and girls. We are part of the national office with branches in every state, Guam and Puerto Rico, and there are over 170,000 members. It is a pleasure being here today to celebrate this historic passage of Title IX. Here's part of the reason Title IX became the law of the land. AAUW has had a history of producing numerous groundbreaking studies to advocate for improved public policies for women and girls. The history about Title IX, how it came about after World War II, AAUW spent two decades serving colleges and university campuses. And documentation found that the late 1960s, most schools had practiced widespread discrimination against women at all levels of higher education, from students to trustees. In 1970, 250 institutions faced charges of sex discrimination. AAUW made national news by distributing guidelines to the presidents of all four-year institutions in the country and Title IX was enacted into law on June 23, 1972. I know my time is limited, so I just wanted to touch on some of the areas that it pertains to you. We've been working with your school district for the past two decades, offering Title IX for middle school girls exposure to the field of science, technology, engineering, and math at our annual STEM conference. Nearly 3,000 have participated over the years and it's been quite a journey and a partnership. Before I conclude, I want to acknowledge that I have my fellow AAUW member and past president Shelley Arnold, who is one of your own teachers here. And I recognize that my time is up, but I really appreciate your time today and really applaud you for recognizing Title IX and the 50th anniversary. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
So that concludes public testimony on items listed on the agenda. So we'll move to public testimony on items not listed on the agenda. I have one speaker tonight, Tim Gilmore. Welcome.
My name is Tim Gilmore. I started a nonprofit poly alumni association, became president in 2019, called Long Beach Poly Alumni Association. I am talking to you tonight basically about three things that I'd like to discuss. One is the naming of Coach Don Knarford's football field, after him and his wife. Two is honoring Jon Rambo and getting him a Walk of Fame star. And three is trying to get Long Beach Poly Football back at home for a limited amount of games when it's financially feasible. Coach Don Knarford basically has won 18 state titles, 25 CIF titles, and he's done numerous things throughout this community and stuff. He's also helped train Arianna Washington and Rashawn Nelly, high school Olympians who went on and have done great things too as well. He's also done things with football, as a football coach. He's also helped out in training and coaching people like Willie McGinnis and Ashon Jackson and so forth. But more importantly thing that he's done is he's also helped out with kids, keeping them on the straight and narrow path. Kids that might have not been NFL stars, but wanted to make sure that they had good Christian values and such. And so, it's, think very appropriately that we worked towards naming the football field after him and his wife. And somehow, the paperwork was started in December of 2019 and it's somehow been stuck up in bureaucracy, I guess. Anyways, the other thing I want to discuss is honoring Jon Rambo. And as you know, Jon Rambo was the first Olympian in 1964 in Long Beach. And he's done a lot of things, not just being an athlete and as a poly alum and playing basketball and sports, but also coming back and giving back to the community, which I think is really important. He helped start the youth leagues and such. And so I think it's very important that we honor him with a Walk of Fame star and the alumni have all chipped in and so the Walk of Fame star is actually been paid for. We just need to figure out a way to get it up there and honored. Keith Lilly, class of 72, does have it. And the last thing I wanted to talk briefly about is obviously trying to get varsity football back to Poly High School, which I think would be really important. It would save money, the coaches want to do it, it would improve the morale, and also it would really make things a lot better for the coaches and the program and such. The last thing I want to discuss also to throw in, there is going to be an MLK school supply giveaway and which is organized by Marcus Hobbs and sponsored by Suli Saro, the city council, and Eric Miller too.
Thank you, Mr. Gilmore.
Okay.
Okay, so that concludes public comment. Item 14 is next, the staff report. And as chair, I'm actually going to choose to move the consent calendar to the next item to, in support of the folks who are out here to do this. Our staff report could be rather lengthy tonight and we'd love to have folks here who worked hard on some of the items on the consent calendar. So we're going to take the consent calendar. So I'll entertain a motion for approval of the consent calendar.
So moved. Second.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. So, for discussion, again, this is not up for, these are things that are not going to be demanded among the board members. They're going to be simply recognitions and callouts, kudos kinds of things. I know, Dr. Baker, you just wanted to offer a point of clarification or allow Mr. Zaid and Mr. Miranda to do some clarifying of two items?
Both of them. I'd like Mr. Zaid to have an opportunity to address item 15.12 and Dave Miranda, 15.15, just to provide some context.
Thank you, Mr. Zaid.
So I know that there is a lot of excitement, so I'll make this as brief as possible. So on December 1st, the Board of Education unanimously voted to adopt our excellence and equity board policy. That was exclusively developed by a team of parents, community members, and district staff. The purpose of the policy was to establish a common foundation of equity that would be implemented throughout Long Beach Unified School District. This summer, a small group had an opportunity to participate in a week-long study to really take a look at its implementation and to ensure that implementation was widespread with fidelity all throughout our district. Two things came out of that. That was, one, taking a look at the Long Beach Unified School District understandings and expectations for quality core instruction. I believe that each one of the board members were provided with a copy of that. And the second component of that was to take a look at our code of ethics and to, and to revise that to represent our code of excellence, equity, and ethics. And so tonight, what we're bringing before you is the first stage of that revision, which is only taking a look at the purpose and the section, the commitment to students, which is now aligned to our quality core instruction. We do plan throughout the year to, to take each individual section and to bring before you further revisions. But stage one tonight is just that commitment to students to ensure that as we start the 22, 23 school year, that we start the year with fidelity to what a commitment to students and quality core instruction actually is in each one of our classrooms. There is more that I can add, but I'm going to pause right here. I will say that students have had an opportunity to weigh in and give input and I was going to read some of those student statements, but we have so many students in the audience who are like, let's move this a little faster, that I'll just pause right there.
Thank you. And I think we're going to ask Mr. Miranda to come forward just to talk about the small changes. We've been talking about this sustainability policy, this green schools campaign work for a very long time and so there were just some minor changes that we just wanted to call attention to before a new vote is taken.
Perfect. Thank you so much and good evening, members of the board, Superintendent Baker, our senior team, our audience here, and our wonderful audience in the overflow room. So I did promise everybody on the green schools campaign I'd wear a tie with green this evening, so mission accomplished. Step one. But really more so wanted to highlight some of the changes here, right? We've been stressing and presenting on this very board policy for some time via a number of board presentations over the past several months, but we've made a few minor yet major edits, right, from, from last month to where we are now. So since then, and read the direction and request of the board members, we made a few edits with respect to adding an aspirational date and a, and a goal to the policy itself. This is in alignment with the state goals and also where, where we're trying to go as a school district as well. With doing that, there was also a few other edits that just corresponded to the state goal and I'll highlight what some of those changes are. So first and foremost, we made a slight change to the title, right? So you now see the word sustainability listed in there. Previously, it only noted energy policy and we thought it was fitting. So already within the policy and the goals themselves, we highlighted things such as water consumption, vehicle emissions, and so forth. So we felt that it was just more appropriate to include the word sustainability within this policy itself. Also added really a change to the reference of the source material with a more relevant source, so we added AB and SB 32, just as a point of reference. Those are very much in alignment with the state goals as well in terms of energy and sustainability. Added a brief statement of urgency. So already, we had a lead into the policy language itself with a number of just different sentences and paragraphs that, that led us to where we want to go, but added just one more line there to further stress where we are and just what the climate situation is for all of us. And then last but not least, we added a few sample projects. So the goals remain unchanged, right, in terms of just the meat of the policy. It includes three goals, including maximizing the use of renewables, newer replacement machinery and equipment being zero emissions, phasing out older machinery and equipment, and of course, reducing vehicle emissions. So those are still the three primary goals embedded within the policy, yet we included just a few line items that listed sample projects is what I would say. We also took to heart just what we heard that particular evening at the last presentation in terms of at Long Beach Unified, we do more, right? So yes, we want to be in alignment with the state goals, but we absolutely will aspire to, to beat that target, right, and do more as a school district. So that's very much where we're looking to go, looking to go faster where we can and as budgets allow. Want to emphasize the fact that the board adopted a facility master plan recently, which includes sustainability throughout the master plan and actually calls it out as a specific project priority category as well. And also want to emphasize just that importance of the task force itself. So we'll have regular check-ins with that particular group. Once we establish it, we'll be able to report back to the board on our progress and just where we are with respect to each of these goals. And we look forward to doing so. And last but not least, just want to thank everybody here, right? So the school board superintendent for the support and guidance, everybody on the green schools campaign, several folks who participated, right? So there was parent groups, other stakeholders from the community, specifically want to call out Diana, Emma, Lilly, Rohan, and Ruthie, because it was just an absolute privilege working with every one of them, right? So I actually get somewhat emotional. It was just a cool process, something Alan Rising and myself speak to regularly. So we often present at industry conferences and talk to our counterparts up and down the state and we often just give extra kudos to every one of these kiddos here and every kiddo in Long, in Long Beach Unified. So really because of their efforts, we see that sustainability is going to be at the forefront of all of our discussions and planning efforts and we look forward to, to continue to work along this line.
Thank you, Mr. Miranda. So we'll take it back to members. Mr. Miller, any comments, kudos, observations on the consent calendar?
Yes. I absolutely just wanted to send my congratulations and thank you to everyone who put, had any effort and input into our sustainability policy. It's important, not just from a district standpoint, but our young people said it best, as we're talking about the next generation and what they will get to experience. And so, understanding that this is just one bite of the larger elephant in the room, which is our planet's sustainability, it's an important bite. And so, I know that everyone has been working really, really hard, especially our young people in the green, in the audience, and so I just wanted to thank them and recognize all of their efforts.
Thank you. Mr. Otto, any comments, kudos on the consent calendar items?
I just wanted to like, Mr. Miller, to congratulate the students who have been working so hard for so long to get this policy in place and to open the eyes of people in the district to the importance of these climate change activities. It was noted earlier, the city council last night adopted the climate adaptation plan and with that, I think the city and the school district is at one in moving in this direction. So thanks for all your hard work. You've opened the eyes of a lot of people at the district.
Thank you. Ms. Craighead, any comments, kudos on the consent calendar?
Yes, I'd like to acknowledge and thank our partners, the AAUW and Shelley for being here and Sunny Zia earlier, she had to go, but thank you for bringing forward that Title IX acknowledgement. It's been 50 years. I can't believe that. I was going to try and avoid saying that I was in school before that happened, but no, I said it, so that's it. But you guys have been such great partners with the, the STEM conferences for our eighth grade girls. I know you have other projects in the works and I know we're going to be able to work together, so thank you for that. I know a lot has been said about our energy and sustainability plan. We've talked about it a lot. I feel like at our last meeting, we really extended our gratitude and we said a lot, so I'm not going to beliger the, beliger the point, but anyhow, thank you very much. I'm very proud of the collaboration between staff and students and how we, we were able to come to a point, and I, and I know it was said before, where it's a compromise, where everybody wins. You can't say that about everything. So, thank you, everybody involved.
Thank you, Ms. Craighead, and I'll just add in my remarks. So it was December 16th, 2020, 610 days ago, that I first had a Zoom call with the Green Schools Campaign. Mr. Galogly, I had known from a previous life as a parent, reached out to me and asked if I would sit with these kids on a Zoom call and, and hear them out on the things that were important to him. And shout out to him, he is dropping his child, first child off at college. So sending him all of those good thoughts. And I remember that Zoom call really well. We were, you know, knee deep in the pandemic and you were still hopeful about doing incredible work to change the world. And I remember telling you that the district at the moment was singularly focused on keeping kids safe and making sure that they were educated, but that we absolutely had an interest in the work and that I personally had an interest in the work. Since then, you've brought, not including tonight, almost 70 speakers to our board meeting over the last year. And I'm so grateful for that. I am. So yeah, we went back and counted so that we would have that number. And just hundreds of hours that you've spent with each other and also with our staff and kudos to our staff for working with you. This is the most intentional commitment to environmental sustainability at a structural level, I think, in district history. And that's a big deal. And I'm really grateful that this is where we are today. So I want to thank you for your patience and your persistence and your partnership in that work today. It's really critical to us moving forward. I know that when I left that meeting and, you know, I've seen Diana and Ruthie and Rohan and Lily and Emma and Paige and Dawn and all of you over all of this time, my intention that day was to, for you to feel like you were heard and valued and respected and that we wanted you to be part of the process, that I think I said, I don't know where it's going to go, but I know that we need you alongside us in the process. So 610 days later, it's a pretty incredible result for hanging in with us. So as it was mentioned, the Long Beach, the City of Long Beach passed their Climate Action and Adaptation Plan last night. And as the largest landowner and employer in the city, we have a special obligation to continue the work. I will note that we were on track to do this last month without those last little tweaks. So we know that this has been about a partnership for our greater community. We know that LBUSD includes more than just Long Beach. And so we wrap in all of those families and kids throughout the LBUSD community that may not be who live in Long Beach. But I look forward to working with the city and with you all in the mechanisms they have for accountability, the task force that we will have for accountability to improve the health and livability of our city. I want to thank again staff for their time and incorporating our student leaders and the public in a really meaningful way in this process. I think it's a great model for, for how we will continue to work together to tackle really big issues. So once again, I know, I believe deeply that co-creating policy together with all of our stakeholders is the way that we move forward with strength and unity. It's how we all have buy-in to the success. And I look forward to what's next for the work that we will do together. So those are my comments on the consent calendar. Any other comments on consent calendar before we call for a vote? Okay. So as is our new practice, we'll do a roll call vote on the consent calendar. Mr. Miller?
Aye.
Ms. Craighead?
Aye.
Mr. Otto?
Aye.
And I vote aye. So it passes four, zero, oh, any opposition, any abstentions? That's the legal way, I know, according to Brent. So that passes four, zero, and no abstentions. Congratulations. Students, you want to join us up here? We can take a picture? Whatever you would like. Balloons, signs? All right, why don't you come up here and join us? Thank you, thank you, everybody. I, so I always take my cues about the gavel from Ms. Craighead. She said I should use the gavel. Again, thank you all. We're going to pull it back and go back to item 14, staff report. Dr. Baker?
We have a second consent calendar to approve. So let's just proceed with that. Mrs. Craighead?
Okay.
These were the two, just to summarize, these were the two items that were pulled from the first consent calendar. They can be approved together. They are item 15A and 15B, which replace Finance Report B and Purchasing Contracts Report B. So they are now, they can now be voted upon together.
Okay. And I'm accusing myself from participation in 15A and 15B on the consent calendar. I have a potential financial interest under Government Code 1091 and 87100. My husband works for a subcontractor who has done work for the payees or the awardees. So I will pass this over to Ms. Craighead to administer the vote.
Thank you. For item 15A, Finance Report B, we need a motion.
So move.
Second.
We'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Otto?
Aye.
And I vote aye. So hearing no abstentions, that's three in favor with one abstention. I'll go right into 15B, Purchasing and Contracts Report B. I need a motion?
So move.
Second.
Mr. Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Otto?
Aye.
And I vote aye. So that would be three in favor, zero against with one abstention. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Craighead. Again, we said it was going to be a little clunky. We'll get there. So Dr. Baker, we're going to move on to our staff report, which is about student outcomes monitoring.
Yes. So we have a team that are going to be, a team that is going to be presenting tonight, and I will kick us off. I shared some slides that I'm going to make reference to, but not put the slides back up while our team gets their slides ready. When we talked about board governance, I ended with two slides. You have full-size copies of them. They are the district goals, 2022, 2023 goals, and the data monitoring calendar. Those are both available on the website. I'll just repeat, under my webpage and under goals. And so I want to start there just to call attention to the four goals that are the district's goals this year. And then just share a tiny bit about them before I, I pass to Dr. Brown. So the, the, the goals that our monitoring calendar will sync up with this year are as follows. Goal one is LBUSD students will achieve at least one year of academic growth. And students achieving below grade level will demonstrate greater than one year growth. The addition to goal one is that the median student growth of Black students will be at the, at least 25% greater than the previous year on iReady assessments. And I just want to hover there for a moment because tonight you'll be hearing from the team about iReady growth. And so you can think about these three parts to this goal. These are academically facing goals that are for all students with a special focus on students who are below grade level and their acceleration of growth along with a specialized focus on our, our Black students who have lower rates of achievement than we expect. The second goal, and we actually saw a great demonstration of agency this evening in our students. The second goal, and you'll hear about this tonight, relates to our students' social, emotional learning and wellness. And that goal is increasing students' sense of personal identity, belonging, and agency. And again, you'll hear Dr. Brown, Dr. Lund, and members of his team talk about, and Dr. Simon, members of her team, talk about our efforts both in the past and also going into this year around the increase of students' identity, belonging, and agency. The third goal is LBUSD student access to and success and post-secondary options will increase. You will hear not as much tonight, but in the data monitoring calendar, you will hear about our efforts around math achievement, high school readiness, college readiness, and a leading indicator, which is our A through G rates. With a specific focus on the achievement gap that exists between our Black students and others in their attainment of A through G completion rates. With a specialized focus on ninth graders and the cohort that is beginning in our high schools right now. And specific monitoring about that cohort as it moves up through the high school years in attaining A through G completion. And then lastly, a goal that pertains not as much as the student outcome, but a goal that is around the, the experience that our students have in our classrooms. And that goal is to center and improve upon the, the quality of instruction in all of our classrooms in new ways. That's because our, our students have shown us that they have different needs. And incumbent on us is to support teachers in having the tools, the supports, the structures, the training to meet the needs of what, who our students have shown us they are and what they need. And then I'll just do a specific call out to a new tool that is taking, as we have evolved as a district, you have heard us talk about the Understandings Continuum. A tool that was first implemented, developed and implemented in 2018 that described aspirations around instruction in classrooms. We've learned a lot since 2018. And so what's before you in a booklet form, it's also available under you on our district website, the revised version. And will be in the hands of every single teacher in our school district in the coming weeks is the Understandings and Expectations for Quality Core Instruction. This document, if I think about being a teacher, which I loved being a teacher and love the work with our teachers, is a place where teachers can find coherence around the expectations of classrooms. It's a, it's a guide with six areas of understanding that range from equitable and inclusive learning environment to setting the stage for student engagement, evidence of student learning, equitable instruction, and planning. With our evolution, Dr. Kale and her team, with Angelica Gonzalez as lead, engaged with teachers, students, administrators, and other staff to revise what was our Understanding Continuum to be an expectations document. Teachers can find, no matter what they teach, if they teach a 12th grade English class or kindergarten or third grade, they can find a focus on practices that research has shown improve student outcomes. And so the reason that Quality Core Instruction is part of our student outcome goals is because the, the time spent in classrooms, the classroom experience that students have and their interaction with teachers is the number one factor that influences student achievement. It is the number one thing that changes outcomes for students. And so our year will be spent in continuing to study the evolution of our practice to centering culturally competent classroom practices and ensuring that our teachers have the training, the supports, the materials, the guidance in unit guides and lesson guides to implement Quality Core Instruction in every classroom as our journey. The second most important factor relating to student outcomes is principals. And so together, and this is work that we are engaged in and will continue to work at together, we've got the number one factor, the number two factor in a school building. And what happens in a team that supports all of those people is what is important. So when you think about the, the amount of time that we're going to talk about student outcomes and asking those questions about how are we supporting teachers and how are we supporting principals, anchored in a set of goals and a data monitoring calendar is the work of our district and, and our senior team in the year ahead. Something that's specific that I hope as teachers come back to their, their buildings and are working with their principals, setting goals for their classrooms and our schools are setting goals related specifically to their achievement, the, the achievement in their building, is that they'll see a, a line from district goals to classrooms and from classrooms to district goals and everything in between. So I think about a coherent system has alignment from big, broad district goals to levels. You'll hear, over time, you'll hear Mr. Moskowitz and Dr. Lund tonight. Dr. Camarino talks specifically about level work. And then the support offices will talk about their support to levels, to buildings with the specifics of their data, to classrooms. And so what I, what I see in a coherent system is all of these systems speak to one another. So tonight's the beginning of engaging the board in that same conversation. The data, lastly, I'll say, the data monitoring calendar that's also uploaded and available for, for viewing is the way that the board will have access to our student data on a regular schedule in every meeting. So this is that moment where the consent calendar gives time. It makes time for the conversation about student outcomes tonight, starting with the poll survey from spring that is social, emotional learning data from spring 2022 and iReady growth data. If there are adjustments to be made to the calendar, we'll make them. But this, the agenda has been set around what is available in terms of monitoring student progress throughout the year. The data that you are going to receive, there's a lot of data. There's a lot of student data. Our focus will be on reporting outcomes by race and ethnicity and special populations every time you have data in front of you. Because that's the conversation we want to provoke. And lastly, each of the school offices will be, they have, they actually have their own data monitoring processes that will cascade from the board, the board monitoring. And so from this point forward for this year, we're setting the stage for what will be the work of the entire district around these four goals. With that said, Dr. C. Brown, as you are being referred to, I will pass it to you for the kickoff of tonight's conversation.
I like Dr. C. Brown. It has not, not the same ring as the future, former, future Dr. Brown, but I like Dr. C. Brown. I also want to thank the board for moving the consent counter and not sandwiching this presentation between the amazing students and the outcome that they were seeking. They're probably the best example of, of data we can give is really looking at what our students are capable of. And we know how successful those, those young men and women are going to be when they move on from our, our buildings. Just to orient you, what we're going to talk about a little bit this evening, we're going to talk briefly about iReady data, very much a, a whole system view, specifically focused on grades K through eight. Kind of giving you some summary data that'll really lead in as sort of our benchmarks from which we move forward here as we move throughout the year and look at data that we get from the same as well as other metrics at different points of the year. And then we're going to talk briefly about SEL, and I'll turn it over to Dr. Lund and Dr. Simon to, to really give some, some more narrative to that data and the kinds of things that work that's being done that's leading to the results that we're seeing. So last year, as you well know, it was our first year implementing iReady. And, and like any first-year pilot, we had some, some growing pains, which is why we'll focus on K8 data. We had a really strong K8 implementation. And really about 40,000 students participated in the, in the iReady diagnostics throughout the course of the year. So they took the first diagnostic in October, the second one in February, and then they finished the So they took the first diagnostic in October, the second one in February, and then they finished the school year taking the third one either in late May or early June, depending on which school site they were at. When we look overall, there's really some stuff to celebrate in what happened in our district last year, in the year coming out of the pandemic and all that that entailed. When we started the year in October, we had about twenty-seven percent of our grades one through five students at grade level. When we finished the year, we were over fifty. So we had a twenty-three percent increase in the number of students who are on grade level between the start of the year and the end of the year. That's tremendous work by our staffs and our teachers and our students. In grades six through eight, the jump wasn't quite so large, but it actually was a jump. We saw, again, more students leaving the school year on grade level than we saw entering this school year. And that's kudos to the teams that did a lot of work to make that happen. And that was true in both reading. And then more so, if we move to slide four, more so in math. So the growth that we saw in math across the system was quite a bit larger. So in grades one through five, there was thirty-four percent more students on grade level at the end of the year than there was at the beginning of the year. So that means not just kids who were already on grade level stayed on grade level. This is thirty-four percent of kids who were not on grade level, who were behind, who are now on grade level leaving the year. All right. So, you know, in a year where everyone just did the same, everyone would have stayed where they are. So this shows, and we talked last year a lot about acceleration, not remediation. This shows that for a lot of our students, we were able to accelerate them and take them from being behind where they were supposed to be to being where they are supposed to be as they get ready to start this next school year. And then for grades six through eight, it was a fifteen percent growth in the number of students on grade level. So again, we did see a lot of acceleration. And that was my statement last year, acceleration, not remediation. That's not going anywhere. You'll hear that from me probably a few hundred times between now and June. But I got a new one that you'll hear a lot too. We'll get to in a few minutes. Growth happened at all grade levels between October and February, February and June, in both reading and math. So we saw an increase in the percent of students everywhere, which means we had success in every grade level, one through eight. Kinder, we didn't give them the test in October. It's a lot for a kinder student to try and learn that as they come in. So we didn't look at kinder growth October through June because it just didn't seem appropriate for those students. Nor will we in this upcoming year, by the way. So we'll continue to look one through eight. So the other thing I talked a lot about last year was growth, not placement. So the data I just showed you was change in placements, right? So where is a kid right now at the moment that we test them? Are they on grade level? Are they above grade level? Are they one or two levels behind? And then what does that mean for the supports we have to provide the student? But the other thing that iReady allowed us to look at, one of the reasons we wanted to use iReady last year is it allows us to look at growth through the year. And so if you'll recall, once every student tested in October, they were given a typical growth goal, right? The growth goal that was their way to earn a year of growth with the expectation that students who were not at grade level, their growth goals were bigger so that they would eventually catch up to being on grade level, right? That's that whole second part of goal one, that students below grade level will achieve more than a year of growth. And the iReady scale is built to do that. So the next few slides, we're going to talk about how many students achieved their growth goal, one hundred percent of their growth goal. And I'm going to talk about medians and not averages. So if I say average, I'm misspeaking. I mean the median. And the reason we do that is we had kids, like in every system, who had huge numbers of growth or not on both ends, and they really shift the average. And they don't tell us as a district sort of what's the normal that's happening in a group. So when we have an N size of forty thousand, we can look at the median. The median represents really that fifty percent did more than what's the median and fifty percent did less. So it really tells us what's the middle of that group performing at. And it gives us a place to start looking for positive outliers and areas to provide more support when we dig in. So when we look across the system in reading, you see that for many of our grade levels, the median in both reading and math was over one hundred percent. That means the fiftieth percentile student achieved or exceeded all of their growth goal for the year, whether that be to stay on or catch up. For grade one, it was ninety-six, so slightly lower. And then in grades six, seven, and eight, there was a little bit of a discrepancy compared to grades one through five. So grades, our middle school students showed growth, but their growth rate was not enough to meet their goal on the median. There was a lot of students that did meet their goal, but the median was not. And then in math, you'll see that the pattern is much the same, except for, kudos to middle school. And we talked a lot about sixth grade math last year. But here's another indicator that some of the work being done in sixth grade math really impacted students. The median in sixth grade math was one hundred percent of their growth goal. So that was the fiftieth kid, which means fifty percent of them did more than one hundred percent of their growth goal for the year in sixth grade math. So kudos to the sixth grade math teams and the work that Dr. Lund has done with those teams. This is sort of whole district view. I spent time with my team today with both the elementary school principals and the middle school principals digging into their site and looking at all the groups at their site and all the teachers at their site to see where are our positive outliers? Where do we see better than this happening? And how can we replicate that throughout the district? And that was the question that the principals started grappling with today. And then, of course, the flip side of that is, and where do we need to provide support? Are there groups at our schools that need more out of us as educators to be able to reach the same growth goal that everyone else is reaching? So you see the whole picture district-wide, but today principals got all the way down to the classroom level and looking at how this looked for each teacher. And of course, as Dr. Baker said earlier, we're always going to break things down by our significant special subpopulations and our race and ethnicity groups. So what you'll see is that the overall growth in elementary for reading was a hundred and five percent. And you'll look at some of the subgroups had higher than a hundred and five percent as their median and some had lower than one hundred, or a hundred percent, a hundred and five percent as their median. So for example, our black students, their median growth goal was ninety-four percent of their target, where our Filipino students were a hundred and thirty percent of their target for their median growth goal. So we still have some gaps to work on. There's still some areas for exploration here for us to figure out how to provide more support. When you move to middle school, you see similar patterns but with much larger swings. So the gaps are larger between the highest performing, the highest growing subgroups and the lowest growing subgroups in middle school. So again, an area for us to then dive into and go, where do we see groups that follow this pattern? And where do we see groups that didn't follow this pattern? Where are there our highlights and what's going on there that we can replicate throughout the system? And you see very similar patterns, although the gaps in math are narrower than they were in reading amongst all the subgroups. So similar pattern between elementary and middle school, but narrower gaps even in middle school for math. So again, kudos to the math work that was done this year. This is actually, to be honest, not a predicted result that I would have had. Historically speaking, we would have seen bigger gaps in math. So we do know that there was a lot of attention paid to math work last year at all levels, and it bore fruit. There was an increase in student growth in math beyond what we traditionally have gotten year over year, sort of pre-pandemic. And so when we look at this data, like I said, we're working with principals to explore them. But there's some next steps for the research side of the house as well, so that we can support the principals and we can support the sites. We're going to really start digging into the gap data and finding out where were the gaps larger and or smaller so we can help the level offices identify those practices that seem to be most promising for our students. We're going to work directly with sites. So one of the things we've offered to all the principals is one-on-one time with research staff members to go through their data, run any statistical analysis they want, and really try and explore deeply what they had last year so that as they set their goals and their programs for this year, we can help them set up monitoring tools to run through the year. So they don't wait till the end of the year to see what's going on, but we can do check-ins with them periodically throughout the year. A line to the calendar, so they all did see the calendar, they're all aware of the data that's being looked at, and so they're mapping what they're working on as well off of that. The other thing that you're going to hear a lot from me is leading versus lagging indicators. So all of this outcome data is lagging indicators. This is what happened last year, right? But really, if we're going to make big swings at change, we have to find out what's happening right now so that we can make adjustments right now. So we're going to do a lot more work hopefully around leading indicators. So Dr. Baker referenced the Quality Core Implementation. And if you look at your goals, there's some data sources there that we're going to be working on developing with our colleagues and with teachers and with principals to try and get leading indicator, like what's happening in classrooms, going to visit, going to see. We've actually hired an additional staff member in research whose whole focus is really on street data and teacher-focused groups and student-focused groups and trying to find out exactly what's happening in classrooms so we can try and correlate that to then the lagging outcome data, which means we can make more proactive changes. So you'll hear leading and lagging from me a lot this year. That's my new acceleration, not remediation refrain that you're going to hear from me. And then the other thing we're going to look is look for confounding factors. So one of the things we've noticed is oftentimes there's other pieces of data that have exacerbated the growth or lack of growth that we see. And so starting to look at, is there something else going on in these pockets where there was high success or not to see if we can figure out how to mitigate those other confounding factors? So that's the kind of work research is going to be doing this year to work on that. So that is the kind of quick district overview for iReady and growth.
So let's do a little pause and process. That was a lot to think about. I know you all have had this ahead of time and you've looked at it. So just take an opportunity to ask questions or to share anything that you're wondering or just what you see in front of you.
Colleagues, questions? Ms. Craighead?
Yes. So Dr. C. Brown, you mentioned lagging and leading. But there was another phrase that you used, street data.
Yes.
If you could let us know what exactly you mean by that.
Sure. So street data is actually a term that's gaining in popularity. And I think there's a book actually that my team is reading right now called Street Data. And I believe the author presented, yeah, at a recent Equity Leadership Development meeting for our leaders in our district. The idea is that street data is data about what's actually happening with the group that you're under, that's under study. So it's one thing for us to sit removed from students and just look at their outcomes. It's a whole other thing to actually go and talk to students about their experience that's leading to that outcome. In other words, to get down on the street with the group that's being studied and understand what's going on and gather that data, which paints a much fuller and more robust picture, especially as you try and make changes. Because to ask for outcomes to change, but to never look at, is there a change in implementation of instruction? Is there a change in the student experience? But to not explore that, you don't know, right? So it's the, was that definition of insanity to expect different outcomes without doing anything differently? So that's what that street data is. It's getting down and actually looking at the experience that's happening.
So you're talking about looking at students not as numbers or not as just their outcomes, but more of them individually, more of them as a person?
And teachers as well, right? So not just looking at teachers' classrooms as you got this outcome or that outcome, but going in, what's going on? And how can we support you? Or how can we take what you're doing that's so amazing and spread it around? But we have to know what that is, which means we have to go see it and talk about it and help the teacher define it for us.
Yeah. And just lastly, I would agree with the assessment that the overall outcomes are surprising in that usually the math numbers are, you know, lagging behind reading. And it seems almost counterintuitive because when you're accelerating a student in math, you might not be spending as much time on those foundational types of math. I don't know how to best describe it. But it just seems to me that accelerating in math would show less of the improvement over reading. I don't know. I think that's what we've seen historically is more of an improvement in reading. And so I thought that the numbers were surprising as well, in a good way, in a very good way.
Yep.
Mr. Miller?
Well, first off, that was a lot. So thank you for taking the break. But it was all good stuff, man. It's, I think the exact information that all of us have been looking for in regards to not only the information about what's happening on a daily basis in our classrooms, but really the information that truly holds all of us accountable to our ultimate goal. All things considered, it is how we use this data, right? This is part of the reason we're having this conversation. And the first two, I guess, breakouts of how we would use the data made pretty good sense to me. I still am trying to wrap my head around, how are you going to use that confounding data, those misnomers? I don't know how they're going to provide much practicality to you. So can you explain to me like what?
Sure, sure. So I'll give you an example that's kind of borne out sort of across the country. So oftentimes, you'll see groups of students that have lower than average achievement. And it'd be interesting if you only looked at it in terms of academic success and you only thought about it in terms of what's happening in the classroom. But often, there's another factor. So sometimes that factor might be poor attendance. So poor attendance is a factor that's leading to poor academic achievement that has nothing to do with instructional practices in the classroom, student's engagement, student's attention, or anything else, right? So that's a confounding factor that's been discovered, which allows you to take steps to improve the student's attendance, figure out how you can support the student getting to school, which would then lead to an academic achievement increase without changing instructional practice. So sometimes it's about instruction, sometimes it's about what's going on outside the school, but sometimes it's about something else. And if we can find what those things are for groups of students, we can take action to try and rectify those situations as well, as much as in our power, to then increase the student's academic achievement.
Ms. Toronto, any questions?
Not so much a question, but first an observation and then maybe two observations. You know, we live in a different world than we lived in just a few years ago. Everything is expected more quickly. We want to, we have to make changes based on information that we couldn't even get a long time ago. And I think that in the last year, before we started using this iReady system, we would take tests in April and get the results in September. And the planning had pretty much gone on, and it was pretty difficult to change it around. But that was okay because we were continuing to look at it. But all of a sudden, we're getting data immediately. And I mean, I think the world is kind of like this. We, you know, when I order something on Amazon and they say they're sending it right away and it arrives two days later, I'm mad because it's two days, not one day. And it's become an expectation. But the revelation about this work to me right now, today, is where we were a year ago and where we are now. We are planning in real time for what's going on right now with the ability to, I'll use the modern word pivot, to say, how can we do this? When you talk about street data, yeah, I mean, what is this? Let's go find out. You can go find out. I mean, it may not be perfect, but we're just living at a better pace. That's the overarching observation. The point is that I just am so impressed coming out of this pandemic where this district is, that people are coming back, they're trying to figure out. And we have a lot of trust in this district, but they're trying to figure out what's happening next. And I think what we saw right now is where we're going. And what it creates is something that is more difficult to measure, but very, very important for the business that we're all in. And that is the development and maintenance of trust. And I think with this approach, that what we're able to do is to say to our students, to our teachers, to their parents, we're doing everything we possibly can to deliver on the things that we say that we're going to do. And look, here are the goals that we're looking for. And we're not perfect, but you can see the effort that we're making to be successful. And it's a sea change in the way it gets done. And by the way, I don't know how many other districts are doing this, but I don't think that many. And in fact, excuse me, we're not unique. But we're communicating to the public in very tough times when people are saying, I don't know what to think. I think I'll send my kids someplace else, but not in Long Beach. In Long Beach, people are coming back. We got a school district that's going to open in two weeks. The signs that I have are that people want to come back to Long Beach, and it's because of this.
Ms. Craighead?
Yes. So Dr. C. Brown, you mentioned delivering news to the principals and drilling down to classroom for student outcomes. So can you talk a little bit about supports for the teacher? So can you talk a little bit about supports for the teachers? Because if you're drilling down to classrooms and you know maybe which teachers need supports, and is is this an appropriate time to talk about that? Or is would this be appropriate with with this report?
So I would say that generally, this is an appropriate time. I'm probably not the appropriate person to answer that question. So so I'm hoping, actually, as we move through the year, that that this report that you've got is probably the last time you'll hear from me alone. Kind of from here on forward, including the one we're about to go into momentarily, you'll hear from me as well as the teams that are doing the work with the teachers. So in in the research office, we help provide all the data so they can look at it. We provide with training on the skills to look at it. We help answer questions that maybe we didn't think of that they want to know. But when it comes to who's supporting the teachers and who's working with teachers, that's the principals. And so then I would always defer to my colleagues who supervise the principals, Dr. Camerino, Dr. London, and Mr. Moskovitz and their directors. So I will let them answer that. I would say that as this is super early and the principals just saw this hours ago, we're probably not there yet.
Okay. Well, then, I appreciate that answer. And what I would say, because we probably don't have, we probably don't have other answers for that, if you could keep that in mind for future meetings, for future reports, that would be, excuse me, that would be interesting for us to know. Because I know that a lot of the materials that we've received for this meeting refer to support for teachers. And so it'd be very interesting to learn what supports are available and how that works. And I understand that's maybe too soon to be talking about that now, and and I accept that. So maybe keep that in the back of your mind for future meetings.
Well, with that in mind, three things come to mind right off the bat. The first would be in support of our new teachers and our, obviously, collaboration with OCIPD and our BITSA program, of when teachers start to analyze their own data and that connection to their coaching work with their BITSA coach in support of effective practice and implementation. The second would be our site level work in relation to analysis within teams. And that's sort of public sharing within those teams, grade level teams, department level teams, around what's working, what's not working, what are we seeing in the data themselves, who's improving, who's not, and how do we address it? And the third would be from a system standpoint around what we call high leverage team actions. So part of that is that data analysis that teams do, but the other piece of it is really connected to instructional practice. And this was something that we were not able to leverage much last year, just because of the attention that was focused on our safety responses to the pandemic. And really, some of our struggles with substitutes to be able to release teachers to do that work. So we're looking forward to this year and really reconnecting with some of those high leverage team actions, which includes unit study, lesson study, peer observation, peer coaching, and getting teachers into each other's classrooms to really discuss best practice.
So it sounds like it's a collaborative effort, and it sounds like there's a lot of support there. And that's good to hear. Thank you.
Yeah. And the fourth, I would say, at both the elementary, middle, and K eight level, is really leveraging our IICs, our instruction and intervention coaches, coordinators, to really support teachers that that really need that differentiated support.
One of the ways that the budget is impacted by this positive, that impacts what we're talking about is, on Monday before school starts, almost all schools will have a professional development day in addition to the day before school starts that is funded out of our ARP funds, that allows them to bring their entire team, their entire school teams together, to look at the kinds of data that you're looking at today. So just to get really specific, the research department provided reports. They were at, as Chris mentioned, they were at the middle school and the elementary principals meeting today, tomorrow at the high school principals meeting, guiding in the things that could be good tools for that professional development day. The purpose of that day is to look at data, to look at the connection of the data to quality core instruction, and to have an opportunity before the school year starts and everything is happening at rapid pace for them to bring their teams together led by the principal. And so great opportunity, if you want to see what it actually looks like in action, to hear teams talking about this data. Most schools, and you'd want to check with the principal, but most schools on the Monday before school starts, the 29th, will have a professional development day that you all have authorized additional funding for, for them to meet.
And one last thing, and this might tee up the next part of the conversation. I look at all of this, and I'm grateful, and I think it's important to know that everybody's looking at this, up and down, from our desk down to classrooms and support staff. I'm super worried about our middle school kiddos. And we know that that age group really did bear the brunt of the pandemic and social growth and social emotional growth and needing support at a really critical age. And I think the last set of data we had, had some indicators. I'm super excited about the math. Again, that's kind of upside down from from anything that I've seen in my eight years. So that's really encouraging. But just, you know, to put a pin in how we continue to support the people supporting them, so in the classroom and other places on campus, as they continue on their journey, because I don't think, we would love for them to be able to catch up in middle school. We just know that's a really challenging time. I know, Dr. Len, you're going to talk to us a little bit, and Dr. Simon tonight, but I did just want to to put in that, you know, I'm worried about our middle school kiddos and and how that's reflected in terms of the impact of the last couple of years on that particular grade level. So I think we're ready for part two.
You teed it up perfectly, actually. So I I was just going to give a just a kind of a brief highlight of the Puls survey. So in your board packet last week, you were given an executive summary of the Puls survey. So historically, or let me back up. The district outcome goal two is around identity, agency, and belonging, right? And these are what actually I would call leading indicators, right? So belonging and identity and agency are things that can lead to increased student achievement, increased academic outcomes. So these are another, historically, we've given one survey once a year in March to look at these things. And we do know that student responses in March are really about what's happened in late February and not necessarily the entirety of the year. So at the end of last year, we implemented a Puls survey in June. We will implement that Puls survey three times so that we have four measures this year of these indicators for identity, agency, and belonging, the fall, the winter, early spring, and late spring. So we will have sort of a longitudinal data we can look at. But we do know that that focusing, like you said, Ms. Kerr, on belonging and agency and identity really supports student outcomes. So a few things that are noteworthy of taken away is, between February and June, the number of students who who reported positive responses to feeling close to other members of the school went up 18%. So there was work being done on the campuses, and you're seeing some positive outcomes in these leading indicators around identity and agency and belonging. For the, the question was asked, are you happy to be a part of the school? And the increase in positive responses between February or March and June was 22%. So there's 22% more students who positively responded to that. And it was about 16,000 students who responded to the Puls survey. So it's a good sized sample for us to take some meaning from. They mentioned things like clubs and relationships with staffs as the things that really get them belonging. Street data, we saw a great example of agency here just a few minutes ago. And in fact, agency and identity have really positive responses in our system. Generally, near or above 80% of our students report positively having a sense of their own identity and a sense of agency. Slightly lower for belonging, in the the low 70s to upper 60% positive. So still, the majority of our students feel positively that they belong to their schools, but it's an area where we can provide some growth, right? It's an area we can focus moving forward. So that's sort of the high level picture of the Puls survey. And as we give it out again in September and and December and February, we'll bring more data back with what they're going. But this is an example where we can co-present, and I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Len and Dr. Simon to talk more specifically about the things that we're doing regarding this.
First of all, thank you for this opportunity to uplift our work at the middle and K eight level in support of this new goal that we set as a district around belonging, agency, and identity. I'm going to be sharing tonight's presentation with Dr. Simon and her team to lift up our work with the wellness centers, as well as our esteemed principal from Washington, Dr. Rashawn Williams, who is here with us as well, to really give you a case study example around some of our work with our new web program, which I'll elaborate upon. So this new, this district goal that was set last year, it was a new goal around identity, agency, and belonging. We've long assessed or surveyed our students around a sense of belonging. That was part of our core survey for a number of years. But these aspects around identity and agency were new, new aspects of that work. And I would, I'm going to talk specifically about three efforts that we're making at the middle and K eight level to to address the this particular goal. The first was really to build a common understanding around these new terms. What do we mean by student agency? What do we mean by student identity? And to really deepen our understanding of student belonging. And you may have heard us refer to our work using Qits, Quality Improvement Teams, to do that work. And this is something that we leveraged with our principals, which basically means that we assigned principals to to learn about this new topic and to teach each other. So we created teams around this work, a student identity team, a student agency team, and a student belonging team, tasked with the responsibility of really lifting up what does this new term mean? How is it going to be surveyed for our students? And what is the connection to our own practice as leaders and our own practice in the classroom with students? So that's that's one piece I'm going to speak to. The second is in relation to the web program, which has been used at select middle school and K eight sites across our system for a number of years that we expanded district wide. And WEB is a program that is from the same agency that provides our linked crew experience at the high school. So it's really an effort to really create some greater coherence within our system around an opportunity to leverage student agency as well as increased student belonging. And Dr. Williams will will talk specifically about what she's organized, her and her team, through the web experience, going to a conference, training her team, bringing that back to our school site, and planning the event which is scheduled for next week. And then finally, really uplifting an exciting new program that we're rolling out with the Office of School Support Services to replicate what we've learned from our high school wellness center experience and really expand that into our middle and K eight schools that we're really, like I said, really excited about. So first, in terms of our Quality Improvement Teams, this is really leveraging the the premise that principals are lead learners. Together with teachers, they sit side by side with teachers to really learn about effective practice, and then becoming facilitators for each other so that we can, that the answers can be in the room, if you will, so that principals can learn from each other around this new work. So we created three Quality Improvement Teams around these three areas. And they basically put together presentations for their fellow principals to teach them about this particular topic, and then to uplift strategies that they could use as leaders with their teachers to build student identity, to build student agency, and to build students' sense of belonging. So in the spring, our principals developed this content and then presented to each other over over a series of principal meetings, starting first with student identity. The graphics here are really intended to just say, these are some things that they uplifted within their trainings, and to really help us understand what student identity truly meant, that it goes well beyond some of the names that we put on student groups, and to really say, how does this impact our classrooms? What is identities' relationship to intersectionality and how we define ourselves as individuals? How does that translate into students' understanding of a journey of identity? So our identities actually tend to change. There are some aspects of our identity that may stay constant, but other aspects of our identity that actually evolve as we grow, evolve as we learn, and and enter new forms of identity. You could say students' understanding of their own gender identity, sexual identity, and how that might shift. So ju- identity as fluid indicators, and really understanding the role of power and privilege, understanding our systems of oppression as it relates to identity, and how we, as a system, as an education system, can support students and their own understanding of their identity, and leveraging that in building community in classrooms. So there's definitely a connection between identity, agency, and belonging. The more you uplift identity, the more connection you build, community you build, and sense of belonging you build. And as students feel a stronger sense of identity, it translates into a stronger sense of agency. So the these pieces do work together, and that was part of our own growth and understanding. Looking at how we create identity-safe classrooms for our students, so it's supporting of different identities, but also identity-centered classrooms. We've long talked about student-centered classrooms and what that means when you have, you know, students engaged in work and you build in opportunities for students to lead work within classrooms, to present to each other. But then there's also that identity-centered classroom that lifts up different perspectives, lifts up different, from a curriculum standpoint, different contents that really allows students to see themselves in the curriculum, what we might call the the mirrors, windows, and sliding doors of curriculum, and how that connects to students' roles. So our first QIT presented on student identity, our second addressed student agency. And what does that mean for, from a curriculum standpoint, from an instructional standpoint around student empowerment, and really unpacking this understanding around a continuum of voice and how we leverage voice and student voice in in classrooms, and then choice in classrooms. So you see two continuums here that really outlined in real concrete ways what student voice might look like in a classroom and how that could grow, from expression of students basically speaking in a classroom to leadership within a classroom. And then from a choice standpoint, from just being a participant to being a designer and entrepreneur of their own curriculum. And what does that look like when you create those opportunities for students? And really leveraging those strategies both in and outside of the classroom. So part of our work is really, how do we lift up, create new cultures in classrooms as well as creating new cultures in schools? We don't want our students, and this goes to our restorative work as well, you can't create a restorative culture in a classroom and then have students step into a school that's not restorative. So how do we do work at the classroom level as well as at the system level within our schools? And then finally, around students' sense of belonging. And we, like I said, we've talked about students' sense of belonging for a while and how we uplift that within our schools, pulling in the equity piece as it relates to belonging, as well as the relationship piece. I think this is leveraged greatly by our work with restorative practices, which we'll build into a future presentation for you as well, so you can get a sense of where we are with our restorative work. But then also uplifting the role of parents as it relates to belonging, which I will say at the middle school level is especially challenging. Historically, parents come from elementary where there's a strong connection to our schools. There's often more involvement directly in our schools. You have six years at an elementary school, and then you step into a middle school where you have three years of experience. And part of our reframing of that work is, you may have three years with this one particular student, but you don't have three years with the family. You often have multiple years with the family, who have multiple children go through your system. So it's really a rethinking about the relationship that you have with parents. It's not in relation to that, just that one child, but it's in relation to all their children. And you may actually have this same family for eight years. So you may think you only have three years to build this relationship, where you may actually have eight. So really changing our schools from what you see on the left in the diagram, which you might call a fortress scenario of keeping parents outside the school, to really more of a partnership relationship, and what that might look like at a middle school where, like I said, that relationship is you're transitioning between levels and the role that parents play in that transition. And how do we uplift that partnership that parents do play a role in really helping them to define that role and feel like they have a place in a middle school world in that partnership? So this was just part of our collective learning that we did together to really uplift these three areas in relation to a goal, to give us, one, a deeper understanding of the goal itself, and then, two, to really help us work towards that increasing students' sense of identity, belonging, and agency in relation to that goal. Our web work is one key aspect of this. And like I said, this was something, a program that was used in three, four of our middle and K eight schools with consistency over the years, and expanding to all 22 schools this year. So I'm going to invite up Dr. Rashawn Williams to talk specifically about our web program that, like I said, connects to our linked crew program at the high school. And she'll talk specifically about the strategies that she's thinking about at Washington to uplift student agency, student identity, and student belonging in relation to our web work. So thank you, Dr. Williams, for being here. So thank you, Dr. Williams, for being with us tonight.
Hello, all. Thank you all for having me. I am delighted to be here. To all of you, the board members and to the senior team, if there was a day to be at the board meeting, today was that day. So, so excited to see those students really demonstrate, uh, student agency. I stand here alone, but I stand here really on the shoulders of my team. Thank them, thanking them so much. I'm sure they're watching for their continued support, for their work on the slides. Michelle Gallagher, Ms. Smith, uh, thank you, Portia Smith, thank you all so very much. All right, web at Washington, thank you to all who had a hand in allowing our middle schools to attend. It was a, I think, a week-long, maybe three or four-day event around Irvine, very, very long days. We thought we were just going to, you know, have some fun and hang out with some people, but they really did put us to work. They gave us the mentality of what web is all about. The idea about bringing, uh, really increasing students' self-belonging, students' sense of belonging. And they also threw out their activities, allowed us to grow closer to each other. So as we began to go closer to each other, uh, then we got a love and a feel for what we all can do. And then we were excited to then pass that on to our teams. So at Washington, uh, we have what we're calling a layered system. We are now the Washington Wolves, and so our sixth graders, they start as Washington pups. Uh, our seventh graders are the Wolves, and then our eighth graders are the pack leaders. And so we're really trying to increase really that, uh, student agency. We're giving our eighth graders really an opportunity to demonstrate themselves as leaders. We're referring to them as pack leaders, and then we're hoping that they live up to that expectation. At the same time, uh, we're introducing them, our sixth and seventh graders, to them, um, as their pack leader. So we're hoping that has some, some weight on it. So, uh, in the first slide, we have our team, our, our team of teachers. So, uh, three teachers went with us to the web training, and then they were tasked with the task of then coming back and then training, experiencing, sharing their experience with our teachers, and then training seventh graders, last year's seventh graders, to be this year's, um, eighth grade web leaders. So they worked tirelessly, tirelessly, Ms. Salgado, Mr. Fuentes, and Mr. Murillo are still working over the summer just to make sure that that orientation will be a success. So the web, apologize for just reading it, it's a program where we have, um, eight to 10 sixth graders, our incoming sixth graders, coming on campus. And they will be paired with two eighth graders. And these eighth graders will lead them through team-building opportunities, opportunities to get to know each other so that as they walk on the campus, they have at least one somebody that they can say hi to. And it's an eighth grader, and so, you know, it's like, oh, I know an eighth grader, like, I'm big and bad, whoop, whoop. And so the web leaders, they meet the, so when we come, we'll do our web training on actually the 29th and the 30th. The web leaders will then meet their sixth graders, uh, during the sixth grade orientation, and then they'll walk them through, uh, the games. And, and their, their games, because we want our students to know that it's okay to play. Our middle school students are 10, 11, 12th grade, 10, 11, 12 years old, 11, 12, 13, and we want them to know the power of play. And so, yes, it's play, and we expect them to have some great fun, but while they're playing, they're also building relationships. And so the web leaders will, um, invite them to play and then also give them a tour, a real tour of the campus. The real deal on this teacher, the real deal on where to go, the real deal on where to get, get in line first so that you can get the pizza, because the pizza is the good line. And so we expect them to do all of that. And so in the process of that, then they're, we're increasing their sense of belonging, because if I feel like I belong, then although I don't feel like getting up early in the morning, I'll make an extra effort to do so because I know I'll see my friend when I get there. If I don't think I belong, and it's 6:30, and now it's starting to be 7:00, and now school starts at 8:00, I don't know if I really wanna make that effort, extra effort to get there if I don't have someone to say hi to when I do. Um, we work with them, building student agency, because our web leaders, they play an important role in ensuring that that's a positive sixth grade transition for middle school to make them feel important, to make them feel like they, uh, belong. And so where everybody belongs, we provide a way for our Wolf pups to find their place. Uh, the picture in the front, the first picture is, is our team. We presented this, uh, web to our staff, and we had them go through the process, play some games with them during that staff meeting. And then that's our, second picture is our web, uh, coordinators, teaching and playing. Now, just really playing with our future web leaders, um, showing them the process, and then that's one of the activities. Um, and the third picture, and then the fourth picture is just how we really tried to welcome our staff. We had music, we had balloons, we had the balloons and the bubble guns going up, and it was really a fun, a fun experience. And then we wanted to include this as well. So we have our web orientation, but at the same time, we have our web orientation. You know, our, our sixth grade parents, they're nervous, they're gonna bring their children to this web orientation, and their expectation is that they're gonna be hip to hip with their child. Nope, that's not the case. So instead, uh, we have on the blacktop, we have about 15 of our community organizations that will set up, set up booths on the blacktop so that as our parents are dropping off with the expectation of staying with their sixth grader, uh, we're gonna invite them over to our community fair. And because what we understand is that if our students know that we have a, a space for their parents, then they're most likely to feel a sense of belonging as well. Believe it or not, we have a lot of students who are still, whose parents are walking them to school every single day. They give them a hug, they give them a blessing, they send them into the gate. And those students are proudly hugging their parents, and we want those students to know that, yes, we want your parents here. Yes, come join us, yes. If, if we create a sense of belonging with our parents, we believe that that will trickle down, and our students will receive that as well. So we do have during our orientation, while our students, our sixth graders are learning the campus, uh, we have another part of the campus open. We have a Kona Food Trip coming, uh, a comp, uh, community organization donated about 350 backpacks. So we'll be able to give, uh, the backpacks to our families in addition to selling our spirit wear and other community organizations that will be on campus. So that's one of the areas in which we are working really, really hard at Washington Middle School to really increase student agency and really increase students' sense of belonging. Because if they feel like they, they belong, then they're more likely to show up. And when they show up, we have phenomenal teachers who are there and ready to deliver some great instruction.
Well, did I invite the right principal or what? Dr. Williams did an amazing job sharing about your web program. Thank you so much. To you and your team of, uh, teachers, um, that really are, to make this happen. This doesn't happen by happenstance, this happens with a lot of planning and organization, a lot of preparation, uh, which the board supported us in this work. The LASP calls out our web implementation, the training that they received, the extra hourly we provided, the materials, the T-shirts. The T-shirts that help create that sense of belonging for students is all being provided through, uh, board, board funding. So thank you for that. Do you have any questions for, uh, Dr. Williams before, uh, she leaves us?
Colleagues.
I don't have any, thank you. I don't have any questions, but I just wanna say that it all sounds wonderful. I, I love hearing that we are, um, retreating students in a way that is valued, in a way that lets them know they're special, we care about them. Not just as, um, as somebody who can produce something as a, as a product, like, you know, we talk about outcomes and test scores and all that. But that we truly care about our students, how they feel, with their sense of belonging, with their um, identity and agency. So it's just wonderful to hear what's happening at Washington. It's wonderful to hear about all the other efforts we're making, the wellness centers at, at the middle school level. And it really warms my heart to, to know that our efforts are so much more than academic. So thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Miller.
First off, Dr. Williams, you did an amazing job. Thank you. I wanted to speak to, uh, the intention around the things that are going on at Washington. As in all honesty, I don't have to tell the people in this room who have been doing the, um, educational background on how kids in their adolescent years look for something to attach themselves to and people to attach themselves to. So to do something like our pups and our wolves and our packs with intention around positivity, especially in my, in my neighborhood, and I call it my neighborhood because I grew up not too far from there. I really do appreciate that. And so, uh, it's webs like we're, uh, promoting here. That in, just keeping it all the way funky with you. And some of our tougher neighborhoods are gonna be most important. I, I just appreciate that intention. Thank you.
When is your sixth grade orientation? Because you might have some people that wanna come by, so shout it out.
August 29th and August 30th. And interestingly enough, August 30th is our teacher's first day back. And so we did that with intention as well, so that our teachers really could participate. And our students will get an opportunity to really see, um, some of the teachers and, and, and get that, uh, quick relationship with them. Nine to 12.
Mr. Otto.
Yeah, I, I wanna compliment you too on your, excuse me, on your presentation, but, um, I mean, we, we had a, the superintendent had a goal last year about, uh, communications. And, uh, I'm calling out Justin right now because this is a message that's gotta go out. I mean, this is, to see the confidence that, uh, that this kind of work can instill not only in students but in teachers and in your, and in colleagues throughout the district is that it's too good to be missed and it's, uh, and it's a community that's receptive to it. So, so thank you.
Thank you for being with us tonight. I love hearing you say that you want your kids to play. That in the seriousness of the work, I think we lose that, especially over the last couple of years. Things have been really intense. And that you have an intention to be playful with your students and bring that out in them is super great to hear, and I will hopefully be stopping by, but thank you for that work. And thank you for coming. I think as we talk about student outcomes and we talk about data, we get packets that are really intense, even though it's not 72 slides, it's six slides, but it's still really intense. But always to hear how it's reflected back in intent on a site, I think gives context, not just for us, uh, but for folks around the community to, to see, um, the connectedness of the intent behind the work which will produce the outcomes. So thank you for being here, and thank you, uh, Dr. Lund, for including that in your presentation. I think it's important, I think you have more to say with us and Dr. Simon as well about continuing work. But again, we don't wanna focus on outcomes and lose sight of the complexity, those confounding data points and those intersections that will get us to the place where we want our kids to be. So thank you.
Yes, and thank you, Dr. Williams, for sharing your story with us. Just a reminder, web stands for where everyone belongs. And I don't wanna lose sight of that. The whole intent here is to take all that we know about students and the great diversity and identity that they bring and really create a space where they all feel that they belong. All right, I'll turn it over to, I'm sorry.
I was like, can I jump in for a second, just as a way to kinda correlate things together? So they worked on belonging in between February and June, the sense of belonging at that school went up almost 10%. So there's a direct impact, um, of the work that they do. So I just figured, since we talk about Washington, we'd share how Washington did on that particular thing.
All right, I'm gonna pass it to, uh, Dr. Erin Simon and her team to really talk through really the amazing plans that we have for our middle and K eight wellness centers.
Thank you. When I move, because my neck is a little tight, I won't be able to look square at you. So this is why I'm here, I wanna be disrespectful, um, in this work. So just good evening to, um, our board president, Madam President, Megan Kerr, members of the board, Superintendent Baker, my senior, uh, team members, and the LWUSD community. As always, it is just such a pleasure to be with each of you, and I hope this greeting just finds you in great spirits and also will. So in recognition, uh, that social and emotional well-being, wellness, and mental health are essential for school and life success. Our wonderful district, the Long Beach Unified School District, is currently making that shift even more so to a systemic, long-term implementation of social, emotional learning, wellness, and mental health to create equitable experiences across all schools and to center agency, a sense of belonging, and so many other aspects of the work that we just heard from Dr. Williams and also Dr. Lund. Hence the reason, Student Support Services, staff members, Dr. Sosa Bodarama, who will come into the podium very soon, and Ms. Susana Cortez, who is our program specialist alongside Dr. Lund and his team, the middle school and K eight offices, um, created the middle school and K eight wellness centers. So I wanna highlight, and sorry I had that on the first slide, just really, um, the goal for year one for our middle school wellness centers. I know we talked about the middle school wel- wellness centers, um, kinda building on the success of our high school wellness centers. Just to give you a little snapshot of, um, the work that our team, um, conducted with the high school wellness centers, and I think just says it all. 65,000-plus students walked into our wellness centers at our high schools. Say that one more time, 65,000 students. Right, if that doesn't give you tingles, right, excitement, then I don't know. Gives me great joy to say that. So with our work with the wellness centers, the goal is to support students by strengthening student, family, and staff social and emotional skills. Just as the team, you know, conducted with our high school wellness centers, they're gonna be surveying students, families, and staff to learn about each middle school's current culture and climate, and also their social, emotional needs. And most of all, our students will be able to name their wellness center, which also brings a sense of belonging and agency the same way, um, that we did with our high school wellness centers. The Division of Student Support Services will provide the foundational framework with the essential services each center will be directed or must provide, and will support the team in executing all tasks and interventions of this work. The wellness centers will be a safe and unique space which will nurture the overall health of our students, our families and staff, while providing a seamless connection between school and their local community agencies. And now with, without further ado, it gives me great pleasure to introduce, right, the, the brain behind this work. Dr. Sosa Bodarama, who serves as our Director of Student Support Services.
Good evening, uh, board and executive staff and community. So excited to be here and just to hear all the great things that are happening with our middle schools today and to be able to be a part of that as well. So today, we've been actually on a tour, um, talking about middle school wellness centers. And we're just, um, so thrilled that we're able to expand the work that we started last year with, um, high school wellness centers. And based on the data from our poll surveys that, uh, Dr. Chris Brown talked about, also surveys that we conducted at the schools, and anecdotal information and, and comments that we got from parents when we were doing, uh, you know, parent workshops through Parent University and so forth. We knew that something was needed for our middle school wellness. So lucky for us that we were able to expand, expand that this year. And so the vision of the wellness centers is to, um, duplicate some of the work that we did with middle schools, but also we are able to really customize some of the, the work that we're gonna be providing based on the developmental needs of those students. We know that those students are pre-adolescents, so they're not quite little kids anymore, but they're also not teenagers yet, so they're in that middle stage. And so a lot of the work that we're gonna be doing is gonna be customized for that. And the work that we're gonna do will include service, support services for the students, but it's also super exciting to be able to do work with parents. And so the centers will be also providing services to parents because, uh, as we heard, parents are still an important part of students' lives, right? We don't want them to lose their enthusiasm for being involved and engaged in their children's education after they leave, leave elementary school. So there will be a component also for, um, family engagement, um, family support services such as, uh, workshops and, um, resources and support groups, for example. So we are gonna provide a range of resources for students and families. But this will be an early intervention and prevention service. It's a center that is supposed to be, uh, It's a center that is supposed to be what we call a tier-one support, right? It's available to all students. Any student can walk in. They don't have to have a mental health concern. They don't have to have any issue. There's going to be activities for them to participating to help with that sense of belonging, doing community service-type projects, like maybe working on a garden. And those projects will depend on what is interesting for them, what they think is important for their school community. We will be working together with the other programs that are on campus. So whether that's the WEB, if there is restorative justice work happening there, we'll, you know, make sure that we're cognizant of that. If there are any other types of programs or clubs, you know, we're going to be working together to coordinate that. And one of the things that, you know, Susana said today that I thought really captured a lot of the principals who we were talking to was, yes, we are going to do referrals. We are providing short-term counseling, but we're not just going to write phone numbers on a post-it and give it to a student or a family, because that's, anybody can, you know, get that from the internet, right? We're going to help them access those resources. So, you know, asking them, do you need help calling? Do you want to call together? Checking in, did that work out for you? Really doing some case management with them to make sure that they're accessing those resources, if they're, if they're necessary, you know, past the time that they're with, with us. You know, it's also really going to be empowering because we, we know that our students, especially if you had an opportunity, I don't know if you read the whole poll survey more than the executive summary, you went through all of it, there's some really great information and there's some good insight. And we know that our students want help. Sometimes they don't know who to ask for help on campus. And so, yes, we will have the centers, the centers will be open. They can come in, they can make a self-referral, a parent can refer, a teacher can refer. We'll have, you know, appointments, but we are also going to have our social workers out in the campus, you know, doing activities in the campus. So if a student is too shy to walk into the center, the center will be out in the campus for them also to access the support and find things to do with their peers and make some friends. So we have been busy this summer. We have already hired the 12 social workers for those wellness centers. And so we have 23 middle schools, 21 middle schools. But some schools will have a full-time social worker and other schools will have, will be sharing. So all 12 have been hired. They will be supervised by our program specialist, our lead social worker, Susana Cortez, who really is a super energetic person and she's been doing a great job with, with high school. She was, you know, she's also supporting our foster youth unit, social worker. So she's just a really committed and awesome individual. So they will be in good hands with her training. Will provide professional development and supervision to the social workers, but they're on the campuses of the schools. And so it's really important for us to work together with principals, with leadership, with the staff there to integrate them into that school community. So at a glance, this is our, we have a project timeline. We've done a lot of these things already, like hiring staff. We'll be doing some site visits to determine, you know, the, the layouts and, and so forth. Our goal is to be open and operational by October. So the staff just started yesterday. We have a couple of staff that will be starting a little later. They're going through training. We have a peer mentoring curriculum that they will be trained in. And they'll be training students to do that. So we will be working on capacity building and integrating them into the Long Beach Way and our framework. And our goal is to start providing services to students in October. So one of the things that I mentioned was that this was a early intervention and prevention service, and it is not a crisis center. So the wellness centers are there for all students, right? But if a student is having, whether it's a mental health crisis or, and I'm thinking like a suicide assessment needs to be done, they should not be passed on, they will not be passed on from one person to another person to the wellness center, right? That's not our protocol. If a student does disclose anything that's concerning, the social worker is trained to provide that type of support. But it's not going to be that place at the crisis center. We don't want it to be a place that students are going to be afraid to be seen in because it's associated as a crisis center. That's not what it is. It's going to include a lot of other types of support. So we'll have a food pantry where they can have snacks. But we've also have some partnerships with some community organizations where if a student or a family wants to take some non-perishable food, we will have that available. We also have toiletries, some extra clothes. So there's a lot of resources and those services we've partnered with our Bethune Homeless Education Program to be able to support students that go in there. And they don't have to fill out a form, they don't have to do anything. You know, there's a closet, they take what they need when they need it. And again, the services are confidential for the parents, for the students. If we do need to get parental permission because of the student's age, you know, if they're under the age of 12, then we will have consent forms. But, you know, it's a place where they can come in and, and walk in and talk to somebody or maybe not talk to anybody and engage in an activity and get to know. And we will be there the whole day. So here are some of the things that we will be providing. As I mentioned, short-term counseling, family education and family support groups, presentations to teachers if they want to know more about. They will also be, we're providing case management, as I mentioned. One of the things Susana mentioned today at the principal's meeting was, as the social workers are being trained today, some of them already have ideas of things that they want to do. And one of them, you know, one of the ideas that we thought was really good was, well, what if we like, once a month have something for the staff? Like it could be like, you know, ice cream at the wellness center for staff and it'll be a time for them to really build a sense of belonging amongst the staff as well, right? Really so they can model for their, for their students. So that was our wellness centers in a nutshell. We're, we're going to be getting ready to work on that. We're working on brochures, ways that we're going to promote it on social media and really make sure that our students, staff and families know about it and know how to access it. And so if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer those.
Any questions, colleagues? Mr. Miller.
I feel like I've had way too many questions today, so excuse me. But it's been a lot of good stuff and I'm just curious. First off, I'm really excited about the wellness centers at the middle schools because I've seen the success that they've had at the high schools. Now, this is where I'm going to need both you and, and Dr. Lund's expertise here because, and I think you've already kind of spoke to this, but I'm just curious on how we can continue to keep those spaces successful for our more adolescent youth. So you spoke to the customization of these spaces for our junior high school kids, understanding that they are going to be at a different maturity level than someone in a high school. What, I mean, can you speak to just programmatically what maybe some of those things may look like?
Sure. So it really depends on what the community wants. At the beginning of last year, when we opened the high school wellness centers, we sent out surveys to students, to parents and to staff to ask them, what things do you want to see in a wellness center? What do you want to name your wellness center? So for example, some of the activities, and we got like 6,500 students to respond to the survey, which is not bad. And so one of the schools said that their students wanted activities, but not like group activities, they wanted activities that they can engage in with other students, but individually. Other students wanted to do crocheting. Some of them wanted to have more of the GSA clubs come to that, to that center, the Gay and Straight Student Alliance. Others had gardening, others had speakers on healthy relationships or vaping. So it just depends on what it is that the students, the parents and the staff want. The other big thing is that every wellness center has a student committee. So the activities are student, not just focused, but led. So the students come together, you know, the, the social worker or the facilitator facilitate that, that discussion, you know, what's working, what's not working. And the students decide, you know, so just there was a survey, but they've noticed that a lot of students are interested in something. So they will, I think we had a couple of the schools, some dogs come for student therapy, therapy dogs. They had an organization. We had to ask for all the permissions and all of that, but that was something that they wanted. And so those are some of the customizations that we can do.
Yeah, Mr. Miller, I would also say that we want to replicate what we've learned from our high school model while also differentiating for our younger students. We, we talked about the walk-in aspect of our high school model may not work as well at a middle school. So that's a modification that we're looking at of what a referral, self-referral or teacher referral might look like, that might create a little bit more organization that might be required for a middle school setting. The second might be, how do we really incorporate parents more into the role of the wellness center? And really value that relationship that, that exists as partners in their learning as well as the relationship with our family resource centers. So our, our high schools aren't connected to our family resource centers, generally speaking, with, while at the middle and K, they are. So really being clear around the role that each of these plays in relation to supporting students and families. Perhaps our relationship even with our school-based mental health provider. The role that we've been exploring around what our, our counselor's role, psychologist's role and social worker's role and where they overlap and where they're different. So those sort of ideas that really help us unpack what this wellness center could, could be for our students.
Thank you.
No, I'm okay.
Thank you for that. I think the differentiation for middle schools is a really important piece of the work. And something that I'm hearing over and over again tonight is the inclusion and the expectation and the desire to have family and parent engagement in the work on the school site. I know there's a lot of talk of community schools and we don't have them per se as defined by some of the external organizations, but this really is the model of wanting to bring folks into the space and allowing and giving resources that we, we may have already had access to, but making them aware of them in new ways that Dr. Williams spoke to around being welcome on the campus and feeling like you don't have to stop at the curb. So I applaud and I'm excited for the work that is intentional around bringing students' families or whatever their families may look like. It might be, you know, carers or grandparents or other folks in their life who are important, but really opening the doors, which I don't think was necessarily my experience as, as a parent of a middle schooler. I think when that was happening, it was a little more like, we got them. We'll call you if you need, we need you. But that idea that we ask them to, to trust us, this gives a little more credence to the work that we're trying to do and support them in the work that they're doing in raising their, their students. So the collaborativeness of it, it's really complicated and comprehensive work that I think we've wanted to do and have the opportunity with some of the funding streams to try out what works so that as those funding streams may not be as abundant, really trying to incorporate that into future budget cycles and what that would look like in the long term. So excited to see what comes out of each middle school, because we know our middle school communities, especially our bigger ones, are really different communities. And so the activities at one might be vastly different. And social workers are magical creatures, I know, especially ones, I would say, who want to intentionally work with middle schoolers especially. And looking forward to, to what they bring to the table and the opportunities that they, you know, share with us that we may not have thought of before. Uh, yes, Mr. Otto.
Yeah, I, I'm just curious, it's really more for Jill and Yumi. Are these pandemic monies, is it, does it come from federal funds? Does it come from state funds? What's the timeframe? They're not, I assume, ongoing?
Great question. These are actually funded out of LCFF dollars, state dollars, ongoing funds. Yes.
Oh, Mr. Miller.
Really small question, just curious. With the social work positions, BSW, MSW, LCSW?
Most of them are LCSWs or they are ACSWs, which they're working on their hours to get their clinical lessons. And of course, they have to have a pupil personnel services credential in social work as well.
Great, that's fantastic. Thank you.
It's very exciting that you found 13 to hire, 13 great ones to hire right now. Thank you. So I don't know if there's anything else, Dr. Lund and your team. Thank you all for sharing with us. Dr. Baker, do you have anything you wanted to, to say to wrap up before we move on to the next item?
Just thank you for exploring student outcomes-focused governance tonight. Great questions, great insights and what you've prompted our staff to be able to share. I think it's just a really, a really great evening. I also just want to say, the data that Claudia shared about, or actually I think Erin shared, 65,000 visits to the high school wellness centers equates to every high school student visiting about three times. Now, I don't, I can't say that 100% of our students did, but that is a significant data point to just hold on to, that every student would have visited three times to get to 65,000 visits. So great use. Dr. Estrada.
Question.
Sure, Mr. Otto.
Yeah, could, could we have the slides that are being used on the, the presentations?
Yes.
I think that will give meaning to it. And then can we use some of that one-time money to get bigger screens?
Sure, sure.
Okay, we are moving on to item 16, administrative assignments. Dr. Baker.
Yes, thank you. So tonight I will continue the practice of asking our team who have administrative assignments to make the recommendations and announcement of their assignment. So I will turn to Dr. Lund.
I have one recommendation for you tonight, and it's in support of Avalon K-12 and expanding the support services that we're providing at Avalon and the creation of a new assistant principal position at Avalon. And the recommendation is for Gage Bailey to be promoted to that position as assistant principal at Avalon. Gage comes to us from outside of our system with a number of years of administrative experience at both the elementary and secondary level and will really complement the leadership at, at Avalon.
And to Dr. Simon.
Board members, thank you so much. So I, I bring to you four recommendations this evening. One is a new position, a new director position within the Division of Special Education, and that is for Director of Special Education, Teaching and Learning, which I bring forth to you the name, Luwanna Wesley, who is currently, who is a program administrator. And we would like to move her to Director of Special Education, Teaching and Learning. We have Dr. Rachel Heenan, who currently serves as our Director of Special Education and SELPA. We would like to move her into the role of Director of SELPA, Compliance and also Data Monitoring. And then we have two new hires to bring to you today for recommendation. That is Amber Murakami, who is a new hire from the Bellflower Unified School District. And she will move into the position of Administrative Assistant in the Division of Special Education. And then the last name I bring to you today is Dr. Sinead Pearson, who currently serves in School District, Compton, and will be moving into the position of Administrative Assistant within the Special Education Office, supporting our collaborative co-teaching at our preschool level. Thank you.
And last but not least, Mr. Zaid.
And last but not least, Dr. Wendy Rosenkuss, moving from Program Administrator, Special Education to Program Administrator, Human Resource Services. We are excited about her expertise, her skill in joining our classified and certificated investigations.
Great, thank you. Do we have a motion?
Who moved?
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, passes 400. Okay, we're moving on to new business. Item 17.1, Superintendent Contract Renewal and Terms. Ms. Takahashi agrees.
Yes, I will read the statement. Prior to the board's consideration of the recommended approval for the amendment to the employment agreement for the superintendent, in alignment with SB 1436, which requires orally introducing actions on items impacting the annual compensation of executive staff, this agenda item involves the amendment of the agreement for the superintendent to extend the contract and all dates in the agreement by one year. The amendment does not increase the annual salary, salary schedule or fringe benefits above the existing employment agreement.
Move of approval?
Second.
Motion, a second discussion.
Yeah. I think, I mean, when the, the rules around the doing of these contract extensions and whatnot are complicated, but I consider this just a request for us to decide whether we want the superintendent's contract to be renewed, and I wholeheartedly do. I just think that what we've seen today, for example, the work that's going on is amazing. And so I, I support, champion everything that we're doing in this district, so I'm happy to make the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Otto. Anyone else?
In the famous words of my friend, Dr. Benitez, ditto.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Okay, call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, passes 400. We removed 17.2, so we are at Report of Board Members. Ms. Craighead, why don't you lead us off?
Okay, thank you. Well, I've had the opportunity this summer to peek in on a couple of professional development training events, like the Equity Leadership and Talent Development Summer Institute for Teachers and Leaders, that's a mouthful. They were working on things like smarty goals. So you take your smart goal and you add, yeah, yeah, made them smarter with inclusivity and equity. And so thanks to Sean Abbott, who is retiring, that was actually the last, I guess, her last task for the district. And everybody gave her a very nice send-off. And Kelly Mayner, Jennifer and everybody else who worked on that event, it was really wonderful to, to see this group that just volunteered to attend this leadership event. And then this morning, I had an opportunity to attend an event for Head Start, Early Head Start and Educare, it was the kickoff for the 2223 school year. So thank you to LaShel Diggs for the invitation. There was a keynote speaker who spoke about dismantling bias and encouraging our staff and teachers to see our kids in a different way. So that was wonderful and just occurred to me that excellence and equity is something that's embedded in everything we do at every level, and it's just exciting to see. And then just quickly, I wanted to talk about the Sankofa Summer Program. I attended the kind of like open house event at Madison and I, I was able to witness just the most wonderful, joyous occasion with our, with our, our young black scholars. And they had tables set up around a little grassy area. The kids were wearing glasses that they had made out of Legos. And they chose the Legos specifically in different colors to represent different things. It could have been representing their, their heritage or something they liked or, or whatever it was. And I had the opportunity to talk to so many students. And for those students to take such pride and, and joy in having, you know, somebody just really connecting with them, and that was such a fabulous event. I, I just can't say enough about it, but I do want to mention that I went to the classroom to see some of the things that were up on the walls. And when I was in the classroom, there was a little boy that came in and he saw me looking at things that were up on display, and he asked if I wanted to see his artwork. So of course I said yes, because, well, number one, he was adorable, and number two, I like artwork. So he takes me to a part of the classroom where there's artwork on display, and he showed me the artwork that the teachers had as a reference for the kids. And he said, um, don't you think it looks like a kindergartner did that? But it was an artist. And I said, really? How do you feel about that? Do you think that's good? And this boy looked at me and he thought about it for a minute, and then he said, I think that's okay, because art isn't perfect. And I thought, wait a minute, how old are you again? I mean, this, this boy was incredible, and his name is Evan. And then he showed me his artwork. And he had depicted himself as a diamond with a smile, just radiating, just shining, just a shining gem. He depicted himself as a shining gem. And I just thought that was the most fabulous inspirational thing, and I believe Evan is somebody I will always remember. So thank you for the invitation to that event. I forget who put out that invitation, but it was just wonderful.
Thank you. Mr. Otto, your board report.
And I, I will be brief. I went to, I can't remember the name of the event last week that all the principals here.
The Equity Leadership Talent Development Institute.
Right, right. And, and I stayed for, for quite a while, and it was very moving because everybody's coming back to school and everybody was sharing with one another what it was that they were excited about, about coming back to school. And, and it just reminded me that that's where we are right now. We're about to start this, this new year and so I'm, I'm, I'm looking forward to it. I think we've got a lot of good things going on and it's been, it's been a busy summer. And I think that everybody's kept their shoulder to the wheel and, and worked hard to get a, a good, a good send-off. That's all I'll say today.
Thank you. Mr. Miller?
Thank you. Well, I have a couple of things. First, I attended the, I guess you can call the sunsetting of the Books and Buckets Academy on June 30th. I know this all too well, because that's the location where I tore my ACL. But all things considered, it was a fantastic presentation to celebrate the both academic and athletic accolades of young men between the ages of 12 to, I think, 17. And so I just wanted to give a big shout out to Books and Buckets for their hard work and all of their great young men and young women who went through the program a couple of weeks ago. There's a couple of opportunities coming up in my district and throughout the city of Long Beach that I just wanted to make people aware of. There are two health fairs going on literally at the same time, on the same date, on August 20th, that I'm partnering with both of them. One, I spoke to, I spoke about both of these last board meeting. One is at Shear Park. Once again, it will be around health and wellness, but it will be also about giving young men haircuts and doing physicals and getting free backpacks and free food and so. And we'll be doing a, this is going to be in partnership with Councilmember Al Austin. And then there's a second one, very similar in structure, that will be going on at MLK Park, and this is in partnership with Dr. Sue Sorrow and our city prosecutor and Doug Halbert and myself, along with a friend of mine from high school named Marcus Hobbs, who's been putting this all together for us, which I'm very much appreciative. But all things considered, that's going to be happening at MLK Park. Like I said, that's on August 20th, which I have both of those items posted on my Facebook page for those that are interested. Along with that, there is a program being hosted by LBCEI in partnership with a local nonprofit titled Demo Chicks, which is focused around helping young men and young women of color get into STEM careers, predominantly around architecture, construction and engineering. So this program will be starting on September 6th, but they are currently doing sign-ups. Once again, for more details, you can go directly to my Facebook page where I've listed the link and just click that link and sign up. I think sign-ups end the last day of August, if I'm not mistaken. And I think that is all for me, because you're going to be highlighting a couple of things too, right? Thank you.
Mr. Otto, did you have one more?
Yeah, actually, it's, it's, it's two quick ones. As many of you know, I've been involved with the aquarium for a long time. And last week, we went to the city council, which we partner with, and changed the relationship between the aquarium and the city of Long Beach. We extended the lease, which was due to expire in 2031 to 2066, 2060, I should say. We've been paying $2.15 million a year in rent to the city, and based on our prepaying the rent that we've, will owe until 2031, we are now, as of the passage of these items by the city council, going to pay $1 a year in rent for the duration of it, meaning for 45 years, 40 years. And we, and there was a pile of money that we're now, we're dividing up with the city as a result of changing this relationship, which means that we can do a number of things, including we just hired a new Director of Education and Conservation. And I thought about that while the kids were up here, I shouldn't say kids, but the Poly High School students and their friends, because the aquarium's been very involved. The Client Action Plan that the city adopted was basically done by the aquarium. All the work was done on it. And I look for and keep saying, we need a better relationship with the aquarium, and now I think the infrastructure is in place to do that. And especially with the new Vice President for Education, and so that's exciting, I think, for the school district. Secondly, and this is, I, I forgot about this because it was completely and absolutely Freudian, because it lasted about six hours earlier this week. I am in this Council of Great City Schools program where we're looking at how to do better board governance. And one of the things that we focused on this time, in fact, the thing that we focused on was policy diets and what we can do about policies. James and I have been talking about this, I've been sharing with him what's going on. And in order to do this program, I had to do a bunch of work to identify our board policies, or at least some of our board policies. I think we've got about 150 of them. And, and I know the district is doing a lot of work right now in looking at what we have and what we need and what needs to be updated and when we have to do reporting. In fact, I think I said to James, where is the building that we house the people that do this kind of work? Because there must be 100 people that have to do all this. But it's very exciting. It's, it's in conjunction with our idea of making our boards focused on student outcomes. It's focused on getting the materials in a timely manner so that we can work on it. And so this is, it's an eight-month program. We're about five months into it and I'm excited about, but with the meeting tonight, which was really in many ways the kickoff of that improvements in governance, and I just wanted to share that as well.
Thank you. I'll be brief as well. I wanted to say happy first day of school to our students at CAMHS and Sato. I know a lot of us are focused on the 31st as the first day of school, but because of their great partnerships with the universities that they share or co-locate on or are near, that they start differently and end a little differently than us. So I hope it was a successful first day for all of those students on those two campuses. And as we kick off, as I said, this 138th year for LUSD, I wanted to acknowledge all the hard work that's happened over the summer. While some folks are 10-month employees, we know that not all folks are 10-month employees. We know that nutrition services worked hard to keep our community fed throughout the summer with our partnership with the city of Long Beach. Our facilities and construction teams ramp up and do even more work during the summer when they have the opportunity to be on campuses free of, of students and staff. So for those students, you know, some of them I know are going to be working right up until that last minute to make sure everything is in place for schools that are newly renovated or helping students relocate to temporary facilities while we work on their schools this year. Our Human Resources and Personnel Commission have been working hard to staff up our schools. Thank you for that. So we have included and hired over 300 certificated new hires, almost 400 new hires of classified employees this summer. Our business department kept the lights on, kept the bills paid, crunched data and do all the things, continued to do all the things to keep us running behind the scenes. I didn't get the number of students who were engaged in summer school programming, but I'm sure, because it's over 10,000 who were doing that work. 750 teachers worked summer school, 600 classified staff engaged in that summer school work as well. 1,800 teachers and staff went to some kind of training or development. So thank you to all of those who continued to work every day and took time out of what for some is traditionally a break, to continue to keep not just our students and staff working, but keeping our community fed and uplifted. I think that's important to recognize as we move into this next phase of year 138. In that consent calendar, and we know, we'll get used to the idea that there's a lot of things in there that we'd love to talk about, but that's the point, is we got to have that other great conversation on student outcomes, was an acknowledgement. And I want to congratulate Diana Craighead on her reelection to the Board of Education, the certification of that, and Dr. Benitez on his reappointment to another term. He did not have an opponent. So looking forward to continuing to work with both of you, and you will be officially sworn again for your new terms in December. So that was one of those things that was buried in there, but wanted to acknowledge. It's great to have you back. And I just, and I'll do the announcement now. The youth climate, there's a youth climate commission for LA County that's just been announced. So the supervisors want to have a commission that is specifically for youth engagement on climate. And so I thought it was prescient that I saw that yesterday. I actually sent out a tweet to our green schools friends with the link to apply. But for young folks watching, you can go onto the LA County site. I'm sure I could have Mr. Itzen send something out as well to apply, to have your voice heard, not just at a school board or city level, but a county of 10 million people would be a pretty great place to have impact. So we know with the agency seen today, that if they've got the time, they'd be great additions. So I would encourage our youth members to apply for that. And speaking of youth members, I, I stopped in on the leadership development as well, and I got to see some of our student leaders from Californians for Justice, who continue to play an important role in how we, the grownups in the district, can better support them, the young people in the district, straight from their mouths. So watching our young people help train up our, our next generation of leaders is always inspiring. So thank you to Californians for Justice to continue to have that role. And I will pass it to Dr. Baker for her superintendent's report.
Great, thank you. I'll be brief, and I'm going to actually pass to Mr. Grayson in a moment. Yes, welcome back to Sato and CAMHS. I did get to Sato this morning and saw lots of happy dragons coming in and just filled the school with energy, breathed, breathed life back into their school, so super exciting. And also just, I, I appreciate the acknowledgement of hardworking staff in summer. School districts are learning organizations, and so there's kind of a myth that when summer happens, that everybody's off. What you represented, Ms. Kerr, we actually had more than 15,000 students in summer programming, from enrichment to credit recovery. summer programming, from enrichment to credit recovery and to other programs, so lots of hard-working staff, and lots of learning, learning for our senior team, learning for teachers, a virtual institute that Dr. Kale and her team put together for learning in follow-up to the last year's Equity Institute, so school districts are learning organizations, and this summer was definitely a summer of learning. We are counting down the days, so to our students and families, we are ready for you. Nine days left before the first day of school for most of our schools. That includes a day before school, where teachers will be on campus setting up, having a learning experience with their own teachers, and a professional day, where many schools will be looking at their data on the Monday, and making plans for their goals and aspirations for their students. So, with that in mind, I'm passing to Mr. Grayson to do a good commercial for something that is coming to families.
Thank you, Dr. Baker, and thank you to the board for giving me this opportunity. Yeah, in the spirit of engagement, communications, we are ramping up, I'm sure that if you follow our social media, if you follow our YouTube channel, and to all the two point three million people who are watching right now, this board meeting, we are, we're really excited to just be doing some new things. One of them is this back-to-school guide, so it's not necessarily new, we've done it before, but last year's guide was really focused on health and safety. But as we sat together with the team and with Dr. Baker's leadership, we decided, we kind of thought, what are all of the things that we really needed to tell families? If we could get everyone's attention in a short span, or ten pages, what could we tell them? And so, you know, with our senior team, we got together and just threw out a bunch of ideas, had a kind of a little brainstorming session, and major kudos to, I'm going to call out names, Chris Afterhugh, to Mary Gomez, to Craig Foster, for really helping pull this together in our duplication department, Chris Itzen, all of our communications team and the folks in here, we put together this back-to-school guide in about a week. But to quickly go through it, it just includes a letter from our superintendent, you'll see a back-to-school checklist, which includes some really important things, including, I think, bullet number two, I'll say it, because I do want all those millions of people to know, that you have to check your information in parent view, it's so vital that the information in parent view is correct. We cannot communicate with you if we don't have the proper phone numbers, email addresses, and all of those things. So, those kind of things, we put information about the new school start times, having a mask, you know, the fact that they're not required, but they're recommended, vaccinations, being aware of social media activity, right? Like, that's an important thing that we just saw last year, we want to keep reiterating that social media activity, and things like making threats can be, can be really detrimental to a student's, student life. So, and then the last thing is just practicing new routines, right? We, all the students are used to their summer routine, and now it's time to start getting back in the, in the spirit of that school routine. There is a whole spread in the middle about health and safety guidelines for the new school year, and then one thing I'm kind of excited about is, even though this is a really beautiful document, I think after the first day of school, it'd be really neat if they tore out this middle page, which is just a school calendar. It's not in the traditional, you know, kind of boxy calendar mode, it's just important dates throughout the year. So, it'd be really cool if parents just tore this page out after, after the beginning of the school year, and posted this on the refrigerator. And here's the coolest thing about this document, is that it is in English, but if you flip it over, the entire thing is also just mirrored in Spanish. And so, just again, major kudos to the entire team, it'll be in an envelope, addressed to each parent, and we really hope that it creates a conversation around the dinner table with everyone kind of pulling this document out, and the parents, guardians, and caregivers just reading over the stuff with their students. And so, really excited to be putting out information like this, to just make sure that it gets in everybody's hands. Just really quickly, the reason why we decided to do a mailer, as opposed to just a PDF kind of web link document, is just because we want every single family to be able to tangibly touch and feel something like this, and have those conversations at home.
Can you hold up that envelope one more time? Because it's super welcoming, and I'd be so excited. I was that kid who couldn't wait for school to start, so I would see that, and I would grab it, take it to my parents, make them check things off the list.
Tried to make it more exciting, right? We tried.
Yes, so, families, be watching your mailbox for a beautiful envelope with good information about back-to-school. The last thing is, I wrote myself a note, and I'll include Dr. Camarino, if he wants to jump in with this week's games, our sports schedule starts, so fall sports, boys water polo, boys and girls cross-country, varsity JV, frosh-saw football, girls golf, girls tennis, girls volleyball, so lots for families and others who just want to support sports to be out. All of those schedules are posted under S. Sports on our district website right now. And Dr. Camarino, call out who's playing this Friday.
Yeah, we actually, good evening, we actually have some games this year on Thursday nights due to lack of refs, and some on Friday night. So, tomorrow, we have Poly, Jordan and Milliken playing away, and then Friday night, we have Lakewood and Cabrillo hosting, so we'd be there Friday night to host, to support Cabrillo-Lakewood, but good luck to Poly, Jordan, and Milliken for tomorrow.
Thank you. Any announcements?
In light of the fact that we're getting back to school, getting back into that routine of dropping off our kids as parents, I encourage everybody to be safe out there, especially when we change our routine, from, you know, families doing other things during the summer, till everybody, everybody converging on those school sites, and we have schools like Hughes and Longfellow right next to each other, and Stanford and Prisk right next to each other, Lowell and Rogers, those neighborhoods get so impacted, so I'm just encouraging everybody to be safe, watch out for kids crossing the street, and be mindful of the neighbors, don't block driveways, don't double park, that sort of thing. Just, just a reminder, everybody be safe out there.
Yeah, I think that's a great point, and we're in the habit of being able to cruise through town a little more quickly, because we don't have sixty thousand kids going to school and ten thousand employees going to work back on the schedule. So, as the streets fill up, please allow extra time, walk, if you can, walk with a buddy, ride a bike to help with the congestion, and be extraordinarily safe. We all know that we lost a student this summer in a traffic fatality, so let's, thank you for the reminder, Ms. Craighead. With that, I'm going to close the meeting in honor of Bobby Smith. So, we lost the amazing Bobby Smith over the summer, just a couple of weeks ago. Bobby Smith was the first African-American elected to the LBUSD Board. She was elected in nineteen eighty-eight and served until two thousand and four, and completed four terms as board president during an era of major reforms that earned national recognition, including the implementation of school uniforms and standard-based instruction. She was succeeded on the board by Dr. Williams, and now Mr. Miller in that area. We know that her legacy is about equality, she's remembered for wanting to make the world a better place, and did so by making sure that equity and excellence could be found in every corner, not only of our system, but in District Six where she lived as well, and had such an outsized influence on our Long Beach community. I am grateful to serve in the same space that she did, and one of the biggest events I got to go to right after being elected in two thousand and fourteen was the renaming of a school in her honor, which was so incredibly well-deserved, with a beautifully redone library as well, and she also served as a librarian at Long Beach City College, so a great testament to her legacy. She had a smile that lit up the room, and she was a mentor to many. And so, we close tonight in her honor, we will miss her, and we will continue to work hard to carry out her legacy. Thank you. See you next time.